Is everyone logged on?
Yes.
Yes, everyone's logged on. Thank you.
You have Rusty and Catherine.
I do, thank you.
And are they on civic clerk also?
I, yes, they've logged on. I can see Rusty.
Yeah, I am, I am logged on Mayor LaBar.
Okay.
And Catherine as well.
All right, well, welcome, everyone. Let's go ahead and get the evening started.
Frankel?
Yeah.
Mayor LaBar?
Here.
Mayor Pretend Case?
Here.
Councilmember Connors?
Here.
Councilmember Nakai? I know Councilmember Nakai is here.
Okay.
Councilmember Neil?
Here.
Councilmember Ott? Is absent. Councilmember Zulaga?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of the British States. One page under the individual with the majority justice for all.
All right, this evening, we're going to start with item three A, and that's a presentation from the Woodland Park High School Forensics Team. And I know that they have asked if we could just join the audience so that the team can give a presentation. So would they like us to do that now, Suzanne, or do we have?
Marcy, you tell us what to do.
Yeah.
We can, we can bring the team up and have a talk. And then we just would like to give you a teaser of kind of what forensic state what we do.
Okay, you just tell us when to get down there.
Carson, would you be willing to speak into it or take the microphone with you?
They're all performers and no one knows what to do, so. So this is our forensics team. How many of our members? Were any of you in forensics or speech and debate?
Of course.
Yeah, fantastic. So as you know, forensics is a collective term for both speech and debate. It is a national honor society that builds confidence in kids, boosts classroom performance. It improves communication, increases critical thinking skills. It prepares students for college and it provides life skills that are really vital for young people's success in the future. So we have thirteen students who are on the team this year, so not all of them are represented today, who participate in a season that lasts from October to March. And they spend the entire Saturday, most Saturdays, competing with each other across other schools across the entire region. Let me see. Each tournament lasts close to twelve hours. And they can compete anywhere from three to five times. So we leave at like six AM and we get back at like ten thirty, eleven at night. So it's a full day event. Each category is between seven and ten minutes long. And it has very specific rules. We are representing here today, these are our inter performers. So we do have an extemper, if you know what that is, an international extemper, who was not with us today. And we have had some debaters compete. We don't have a large debate portion right now at the school. We're going to show you in a few minutes, we'll give you an idea of what each, what they actually do, three to five times on a Saturday. So I'm going to introduce you to Mia Nicholsburg and Jackson Murray. And they are a duo team. They are state champions. They got first place in state, sorry, gay. They are going to Nationals in Phoenix. They competed at Nat Qualls and they got second place. And so they will be going to Nationals in Phoenix in June. And they will compete with five thousand other students across the nation. And they, they also attended Nationals last year in two thousand and twenty-two. And they made the top twenty out of all of their competitors, which in Woodland Park High School was the first time in our thirty-three years of taking competitors to Nationals. So that was a huge deal for us last year. So congratulations to those two. We have Kevin West and Courtney Little. Give them a wave. They are a duo team. We have Eden Fuquay and Gianna Goss. They are also a duo team. And Felicia Langenfeld and Emma Hanahan, a duo team as well. We also have Adlin Scott and Sarah Furman. They are a duo team. They are not here today. We have Caleb Kezier, and he is a humor interpreter. He is also state champion this year. He got first place. And he got first place at Nat Qualls, which will allow him to go to Nationals this year as well in Phoenix. So he'll be, we have three representing our school this year. So that's fantastic. We also have Kayla Mallett, who does informative speaking, and Ian Waltermeier, who is an international extemper. So our coaches are myself. This is my twelfth year coaching at Woodland Park High School. And recently, I just took over this year from Bill Brown. And he, he was there for eleven years, so that's very exciting. We have Michaela Davidson. This is her fourth year of coaching. And we have Ame Kale, and it's her first year of coaching. And we also have Lori Armit, who is also, she's our debate coach. So, um, so that's what, that's, yes.
You assume we all know what extemper is? That, is that extemporaneous?
Extemporaneous speaking, yes. She's going to describe what all of these things, if you'd like to know what they do, because, yes. So this is Michaela Davidson.
So to answer your question, yes, extemporaneous speaking is what Ian Waltermeier has done. And students draw us different questions based on current events and are tasked to answer that question. They have thirty minutes to write that speech and then they deliver a three to seven minute speech. Ian placed fourth at a couple of meets this year. It is a very impressive and difficult, challenging event, as well as the rest of these. But our interpreters are up here, and by interpret, we mean interpretation. So all the folks here, we're very interp heavy this year, spend their time taking a piece of literature and adapting it. So like Emma and Felicia adapted the movie up to a ten-minute performance where they play all the characters. And the rest of these folks are, two, three of them used musicals as their reference, so. Eden, Eden and Gianna adapted a musical called Be More Chill. And Courtney and Kevin adapted the movie The Princess Bride for a ten-minute presentation. Mia and Jackson adapted the musical Parade. And Caleb Kezier adapted the musical Nonsense. So, yeah. So we're going to actually show you guys some of their, our two state champions, or three state champions. We're going to show you their pieces. Just a little teaser, because they're ten minutes long, we know, we don't have a ton of time. So if you guys wouldn't mind coming and joining us, so that maybe everybody can see and the rest of our team can sit down. We're going to start today. Yeah, Jackson. We're going to start with Caleb Kezier, our state champion in humor, as well as Nat Qualls champion. As I mentioned, interpretation is all about taking the literature and adapting it. And of course, in humorous interpretation, it is meant to be comedic. He is also tasked with the difficult challenge of interpreting and playing many, many characters. So you'll see him very quickly and expertly change between each of these characters.
Hi, audience, ready?
Ready.
May I have your attention? Reverend Mother is on her way over here now. Well, I thought maybe you would all communicate paper and help me for a good reason. What I'd like you to do is once you arrive, give her the big old announcement challenge here. If you don't remember, this is how it goes. Okay, let's try and count it for you. One, two, three. The Jews are over the mother sister, Mary Regina. Oh, he's eating. I mean, how the little sister, oh, being high. He's down, now she did in school. And the ice and the rest, each and every one of you are having a lot of good fun, everything activity. This is all about, you see, I thought I could. Certain be swapped. Nearly every sister died instantly on tourism. Everyone's going to like the last. And we've got that. Which was simply based on in that city. Yeah, we have no idea what to do, so we all began praying for guidance. And I got a mission. It was in the same capital, you know, of Saint George, yes, in town. Ways I haven't instructed you about the greeting card company. And I also did it with a two shakes. So we took the money and buried forty-eight of the fifty-two dead sisters. Then Reverend Mother bought a three D H C black screen TV. Personally, I thought we should bury all of the system before buying a three D H C black screen TV. As a mixture of nonsense, I am only number two around sharing. When I try, sorry, not to question Reverend Mother. What you being the black woman existed in the freezer? Twenty-one, twenty-two, this is my. What is that money to bear with those last whole did she does? Then everyone says, oh, yeah. These is the Robinette. She seems to drive a car. These are the down here. She doesn't know what we're doing. I put the things that on her head and her memory is gone. What you pay? These is a video. She's got nothing good, she's brand new. This is a rumor. Did it all, you said, you come out. And I am your Reverend Mother. This is nonsense by Dan Gargan.
Up next, we're going to share with you Mia Nicholsburg and Jackson Murray's duo interpretation piece. In duo interpretation, not only will these performers often interpret multiple characters, just like Caleb did, but they also have the wonderful challenge of not being allowed to look at each other while they're performing or touch each other. So you'll notice some of the unique ways that they get around this. Yeah, this is Jackson and Mia.
It's hard to speak. I'm not a member of the answers. I never touched that. Don't move the eyes. They don't teach us in schools about Leo. A real Jewish man who was wrongfully persecuted and lynched, leading to the second rise of the KKK.
They don't teach us at school that the Nazis didn't met and believe in things like black magic.
They don't teach us that the real monsters are atheists.
When I was a little girl, my daddy didn't put his roof to use. Because he didn't want me to know.
But there's evil.
And what that people did survive.
To every Jewish family.
Two weeks ago, an angry mob of national capitalists stood outside the Bernard Beat Theatre on Broadway.
In protest to a play about Dale Frank.
In protest.
The same way they did in nineteen thirteen. This is the story of Dale Frank. They helped bring food. Of course.
It's the, I thought. Well, I was hoping you'd get out a picture and beat my heart this afternoon. It is the Federal Memorial Day.
Federal Memorial Day is ass non. But why would anyone want to celebrate the Bruce of the war?
Didn't see it. It don't go so ass non. Do you move there in the workplace?
You know why, Lucille, your uncle offered me a good job. I didn't know that pays so much, but you have to live in Atlanta, I'm doing. I mean, these people make no sense. These people belong in zoos. I didn't know that being southern's not just being in the south.
That's what I get from marrying a Yankee. It's just, oh, then we down.
But super extended.
Super extended. I say, the way you sound, you're down there. I think you own that old factory.
He's such a mischievous.
Why do you use words like that?
It's that Jewish words and I'm Jewish.
So am I. Doesn't mean I feel speaking of foreign language.
No, like, I mean, I can't understand how God created you people, southern and Jewish at the same time. The Jews are like, you see, I thought Jews were Jews. I was wrong.
Well, in Federal Memorial Day, it's a holiday in this part of the country. Whether you like it or not, or kind of playing a picnic for the folks to like. Or when you live in the land too.
There's something the matter.
Mr. Frank.
Yes, what's that?
I was taking around the bakery and I was in the basement. Shot him right around. And I'm catching on a pile of breads in the middle of the week. Oh, no.
You know who this is? Mr. Frank. Oh, my God, it's the little girl I picked yesterday. She's in my office. Yes?
Name?
Don't see it yet. Employee number? Seven. Oh, I can't pick up. For real, no, no, come on. Baby, I'm picking. D H A G A. One employee sent here.
I've seen. Pile of breads in the bowl. So I woke. And I keep.
Hello. I ain't no time to run it to home. But that's a story. My home all night. I didn't even know the girl. I don't know. She's in my office yesterday. You're coming with us. Mr. Frank.
So that's it. All of these students are also part of our theater departments at Woodland Park High School. And they perform in the plays and the musicals. So they're all in Anastasia, which is coming up at the end of April. So, yeah, do a little plug there for them.
Thank you, guys, for your time.
Kristen, do you want to think here? Mayor, would you be taking these two?
There's some future attorneys and council members right there.
That's awesome. Thank you.
And actors, which are what most attorneys are.
Spoken right out of the horse's mouth.
All right, next, we are off to the item three B, and that is the consideration of appointments to the planning commission.
Thanks, Mayor LaBar. Just pulling up my staff report, but as council knows from their packet, we have three openings on the planning commission. And we received an application from Mr. Melvin Pierce, who's interested in applying for the planning commission. He's with us this evening in the audience, available for any questions council may have.
Sure, and Mr. Pierce, if you'd like to just come on up to the podium and just introduce yourself and let the public and council know why you're interested in the position. So I know council has been able to read your information, but the public may or may not have, so.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. Again, my name is Mel Pierce, and I'm a small business owner here in Woodland Park. Have a little remodel and handyman business. And saw that there were some openings and needs within this organization for the city for several months now. And thought I would offer to fill one of those positions.
Very good. And council, do we have any questions or comments for Mr. Pierce? I know, Robert always does, which is good. And let me just remind Catherine and Rusty, shout out if you have stuff, because I don't see you and I forget, so I'm sorry.
No problem.
So, so, Mr. Pierce, you do, have you had experience with planning issues? Have you been to any of their meetings? Can you tell us what your passion is about it?
I have not had any experience with any city government in the past. I, again, a small business owner and have had some experience recently with Dave Burgess in our local planning department with some things that having to do with my own residence and addition we're doing there. And so, you know, I feel like I've got a little insight, I guess, of the, some of the things that go on there. And recently, you know, pulled permits for my own home. And so Pike's Big Building Authority understand how they operate now, too.
Very good. Thank you.
Kelly?
Frank? Good evening. I'm sorry.
Good evening. I'm interested, what is the name of your business?
It's MLP, Home Maintenance.
Okay, thank you. I'm in real estate and I'm always looking for handyman. Handyman.
Have a card here.
I'll get it from, I'll look you up and reach out to you. I'm always, they, they come and go so quickly that I'm always have my ear open for, for folks that do that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, can you hear me?
Yes.
I just had a quick question, Mr. Pierce. How long have you lived in Woodland Park?
My wife and I moved here about four years ago.
Okay. And I assume you like it?
Yeah, we always vacationed in Colorado in the summer times, and we've always tried to figure out how to live here. And we finally figured that out. So we've moved into town. We own a home and residence to stay.
Cool. Thank you.
Councilmember Neil?
I don't have any questions for the applicant. I don't know how the vote will go. I suspect you'll be appointed, but if not, my vote may change after the STR. I just don't want to change the planning commission's composition until we get past the STR. And they've had a lot of information to digest. We presented to them, the citizens have presented to them. So don't take my vote, which I'm telegraphing as my final position later on.
Councilmembers Zulaga?
Question, Susan, how many vacancies do we have and what's the length of their tenure?
Three. Three vacancies. And the three terms that are vacant, the term expires March sixteenth, excuse me, January first, two thousand and twenty-six.
That's the first, that's the longest, the shortest one, I'm sorry?
They're all equal.
They're all equal.
Yes.
Two thousand and twenty-six. And then I understand that at the last planning commission meeting, they did not have a quorum. Is that correct?
I don't know. CJ, do you know that?
So Rusty, I just, maybe, could you tell us, CJ, what went on with that?
Yes, sir. So there was two items on the agenda. The first item, there was a quorum. The second item, one present planning commission member had to recuse himself from that item, which made it not a quorum. The chair was not able to make it that night, last Thursday.
Okay.
So can you tell us what implication that has to the community when they are not able to attend to a piece of business on the calendar?
In this specific case, council member, the item that was supposed to be heard, got rescheduled to March twenty-third.
In this specific case, council member, the item that was supposed to be heard.
This is a good.
Was you, right?
He's a master of triloquist, too. Throw his voice.
I mean, I see that planning director, Schmink is on also. Council has any questions for her?
Council, any questions?
I would just like to thank you for volunteering. Appreciate it. It takes time to do every single one of these jobs.
The pace great.
So, so do you need a motion? Is that lower?
Yes, I just want more. I just was reviewing your application again, and I'm just curious about a statement that you made. Your opinion on the most pressing issues facing Woodland Park. You mentioned gaining council trust to accept recommendations from the planning commission without having to modify them. And then you wrote on the next line, politics, and then question marks.
Yeah.
Can you help me understand that?
Other, I watch every council, council meeting on Facebook most of the time. And I see a lot of division, not only within the city council, but and I also know that the planning department brought you a recommendation on the STRs. And that it was, it's, in my opinion, seemed to be picked through very precisely by the council, which may be your job. But it just seemed like that these people spend a lot of time putting this, this document or this recommendation together. And then to have it picked apart seems a little like second guessing. And again, that may be your job, but I don't know that.
Well, and I would agree with you in your, in your comments. I thought they did a fine job as well and, and brought together the, the long-term public input and process that we went through and tried to massage that into a recommendation to the council. And, and with regards to politics, is that a reference to that as well?
Oh, it's referenced to everything that goes on in the world.
They will, it is, certainly, personally and professionally.
Yes, ma'am.
So thank you for helping me with that.
Thank you.
With no further questions, then can I get a motion, please?
I move to accept Mel Pierce for one of the three vacant positions on the planning commission. I'll second.
Council, you may vote.
Suzanne, my iPad's not cooperating. Can I just give you my vote?
Um, yeah, I'm going to ask council to revoke something. It just, everything just disappeared, if you would not mind, please.
Okay, maybe it'll come back.
Yeah, hold on one second, Councilmember Nakai. Please re-votes. Thank you.
Not up yet.
It just, everything just went blank. Let's see. I got it.
Now it's come up.
I got it.
Excellent. Okay. We have a tie. The vote is three, three. And Councilmember LaBar, Councilmember Case, and Councilmember Neil have all voted no.
Do you want to let the public know what that means?
So if I'm correct, Mr. Wilson, we bring it back to another meeting. So what we'll do, council, is maybe there'll be a time where we can get seven of us. And it might not end in a tie. We'll bring it back to another council meeting. I'll make the arrangements with Mr. Pierce and he'll appear before you once again.
Thank you. Hey, we are off to item three C, which is presentation of awards to the police department staff and citizen. And our presenter is our police chief. Then we saunter up to the microphone.
I promise I don't do it on purpose. Good evening, Mayor, Council, Mr. Manager, Madam Clerk. Always appreciate the time to come before you and highlight. Always appreciate the time to come before you and highlight the work that these fine folks are doing in the community. Uh, tonight's actually kind of interesting because we're going to present an award to the citizen too. So if you humor me, I'll take the mic, I'll come down, start the presentation. All right. So the first one we're going to do, we're going to start with our citizen award. And we're going to take everybody back to January nineteenth of this year. Uh, but before I start, I'd like to know if the Price family would like to come up and join me. So as the Price family is walking up here, uh, graciously humoring us this late with children. Uh, we'll tell you that the day probably started off much like every other day that these fine folks live. Uh, dropping off their children to their caregivers and making their way to work. Uh, which I presume is exactly what happened, only to find out later that afternoon. They received a phone call shortly after we did that their young son had gone missing from his caregiver. Uh, not to mention the fact that that kind of call automatically will set every bell off in the police department. With kind of like the all hands on deck response. Uh, a little luck never hurts. And today, well, that that particular day, and I can tell you, I think at least three of us, maybe more of us, were actually out looking that day. Uh, we come to find out that this young man is very fast. Uh, very fast. I'm not even joking. Um, to set the tone for the day, see? That's my fault, sorry. Uh, to give you an idea of the, of the, the conditions of the day, and if there's anything that I'm missing, you guys let me know. But I think it was in the forties that day. It had snowed recently. There was snow all over the, yeah, there you go. Uh, and this young man took off with no shoes on, no jacket and some personal effects. And off he went northbound on sixty seven on the trail. And we were looking and we looked quite a bit and we received probably the best phone call that I personally can get. And they would probably agree, uh, that we had a young lady who had found this young man and was holding him for us as best she could because she had been running behind him, uh, trying to get him to stop. And of course he wouldn't. And I think they made their way from Valley View all the way down to Tamarack. If you can kind of get an idea of the, the distance that they traveled. Uh, but this young lady was instrumental in helping us get these folks reunited. And tonight I would like to recognize her on our behalf for her help. And I know that these fine folks have something here for her as well. So if Samantha Tratner would be so kind as to come on up. There you go. So I don't, I don't know if he remembers the lady who was chasing him on sixty seven. But nonetheless, I will tell you, he, he did well. He didn't go to the stranger. Uh, that was interesting. But, uh, I will also tell you that this, this event involved a lot of folks. We had deputies there. We had animal control officers there who were helping look. And we got, we got pretty lucky. Uh, but since they've already given you your gift, I would like to present you with a plaque from us. Dated January nineteenth, when this fine day happened. And if you don't mind, I'll try to read it to you because I don't have my readers on and it's getting old, old is hard, but uh-huh. Let me see, let me see if I give it a, I give it a shot and see where you go. In appreciation of your willingness to help our officers locate a missing four-year-old child who had wandered away and was out barefoot below freezing temperatures. Your call to emergency services helped get officers to this young child without undue delay and get him out of the elements. Had you not intervened, the outcome of this case is unimaginable. Thank you for your involvement and partnership with our police department and community presented to Samantha Tratner dated nineteenth of January. Thank you very much, ma'am. No, I don't know if you all have anything you'd like to say, but if they will humor me, I'll give you the microphone and anything for the cause of the greater good. Man, a few words. I should probably aspire to be like him. So Mayor Council, if anybody wants to come down and, uh, join us, Samantha, don't leave. Because I think the mayor's got, uh, one of her coveted coins for you. And she sees it on eBay later, we're going to talk. Anybody from Samantha's family want to come up? Oh, man, all the important people are in the picture. We're good. Leave them. Yeah, we're, okay. Oh, Lord. Yeah. All right, folks. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, so while I'm standing here, I've got to stand on an hour time limit or I lose my bet with Suzanne. Uh, so the, this is always, I have to stand for sixty minutes or I lose my bet with you. This is always a fun time to present awards, even though the word fun and life-saving awards usually don't go hand in hand. Uh, you know, cops got into cop work because we didn't want to do medical. Let's just be honest. Uh, there's a running joke about the cops and the medics that we try to not to be the medics to the calls because cops just don't like getting dirty with medical stuff. Of course, that is a joke. Most of the time we are on medical calls before they are because we're out on the road a lot. This particular day, and if I have my plaques here, was the twenty-second of December of last year, right before Christmas time. Uh, the three officers here about to meet, who quite honestly are no strangers to being upfront. They've had awards here before. Uh, were dispatched to a called City Market Plaza, where an unresponsive driver had gotten to have crashed with another vehicle. Driven up onto an obstacle and was fairly well unresponsive. So the three of these officers, uh, got to that scene as quickly as they possibly could. And when I tell you the description in the report that I've read about this particular call is as close to the most bona fide life-saving call and award we could possibly give out. Uh, they noticed that this young lady was unresponsive. Uh, a combination of Officer V Hill, Officer Marjorie and Corporal Wadham, who you'll meet in a second. Quickly assessed that situation, had to force entry to the vehicle, remove her from the vehicle. And then the combination of the three of them started CPR measures and the use of an AED to try to revive her. Now, when I tell you that CPR is not easy, uh, if any of you have had the unfortunate circumstance of having to do it. You know, it's not hard. It's not very, uh, hard, um, it's very hard to do. They did it for seven minutes. Which in cop talk is an eternity because we're waiting for someone who can do it better than us to get there. And that's just the way it is. Uh, fortunately, the medics were able to get there, take over that call. And when they were able to administer some advanced life-saving measures, we're actually able to revive her. So she is, uh, alive and well and would be here tonight, but she and her husband are in Minnesota. Uh, so they will not be here, but they are very appreciative of the efforts of these three officers. If I could have Officer V Hill, Officer Marjorie and Corporal Wadham come on up. Uh, you know, I am almost to my first full year of service in the city. That is quick. Um, having now, this will be year thirty-one. The first thirty actually smoked by, but this last one has just been a whole new level. And getting to watch these folks and getting to know them and how they personify public service and their desire to serve the community and work together. And, you know, police officers and cops, we were, you know, a fickle bunch anyway. We have a little quirks and our similarities. But at the end of the day, when the bell rings, they come together to get the job done. And folks, they're not doing it for me. They're doing it for you. And it's not easy, but they understand that you appreciate them and what, what they're doing. So, uh, for my appreciation to all of you, I'll present your plaques for the life-saving award dated last year. With my thanks and continued appreciation for your service and your dedication to the city. Corporal Wadham. I'll be right back. She's sliding plaques at me. She wants me off the stage. Officer V Hill. Oh, that's right. Congratulations. This young lady apparently got to them on Christmas Day and texted them to let them know she was okay. So everybody's holiday worked out real well. Again, these are officers to be commended. Thank you very much. Appreciate your work. Did you get the pictures? They can tighten up a little bit if you want. Apparently the mayor's going to come down and she's going to, uh, present you all with her coin as well. Now you're good. You're in the middle. While the mayor's giving away her coins, I will tell anybody who's curious to see what it is we do, how we do it. Come out tomorrow. Spend some hours with them. Get in the car with them. See firsthand what they do. Don't just hear about what they do. Come out and see how they perform, what they're doing, what their passion or drive is. And, uh, we'll change some hearts and minds. So thank you all for your time, Mr. Manager, Mr. Mayor, Council. We appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, we're off to three D, which is a presentation of quarter one and update on Newmont Mine. And we have Representative Andrea Connolly present for us.
Good evening, council. My name is Katie Blake. I'm the Sustainability and External Relations Manager at Newmont's Cripple Creek and Victor Mine. With me tonight, I have, uh, two new external relations representatives. Just wanted to introduce them. Uh, first, we have Hunter Peralis. Uh, and then we have Andrea Connolly, who's going to be giving you the overview tonight. And not with us tonight, we do have a fourth member of our external relations team, Caitlin Ragsdale. And now I'll pass it off to Andrea.
Thank you for having us here tonight. Um, and I appreciate some of you already coming to our, our, um, quarterly updates as well, our open houses. Uh, first off, I'm going to start off with a value share of ours. Um, just to let you know a little bit about our endowment fund. This is something that came up when we did our social impact assessment recently, um, that people were concerned about what was going to happen uh, to our, our communities after the mine shut down eventually. So, uh, our, um, endowment fund, uh, we contribute thirty thousand dollars to that every year. It continues to grow other ways as well. Uh, direct employee donations through the legacy fund. Newmont match dollars for employee donations to community investment options, uh, investment incomes. And as of, uh, February twentieth, unfortunately that stopped Amazon Smile. We had, um, our fund participating in that as well. The Legacy Fund Board of Directors has established a preliminary plan to manage and, uh, distrib- distribute the funds. Uh, but it's not anticipated to be enacted for many years to come. The Endowment Fund is growing today and will not be considering distributions until well into the future when Newmont ceases operations in the area. So just a little bit about that, that we have in place for the community. Next, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about our social impact assessment. That is something that we just recently finalized. If anyone is looking for our recap of that, please feel free to reach out to Caitlin, uh, after the presentation. Uh, but we, um, did a social impact assessment, which the objective of it was to provide an understanding of the key social and economic risks associated with Newmont's current and future activities. And as a guide for identifying and understanding the effectiveness of mitigation measures and supporting sustainable community outcomes during operations enclosure. So we did this in three different ways. Uh, first, there was the desktop review. Uh, we looked at, um, you know, summary of grievances. Other policies and procedures, uh, the old, uh, social impact assessments from two thousand seven, two thousand eighteen. So the third party looked at that as well as, um, the social baseline study, which they looked at basically, um, all of our factors in the communities that we operate in. So demographics, health profile, standard of living, hu- human, human rights. Uh, these all went into consideration for the impact assessment as well. And then finally, uh, we had stakeholder engagement. So we did more than forty-five interviews. Some of those were individuals, some of those were focus groups. So we, um, interviewed local government officials, uh, local business members, employees, contractors. So, uh, we got a pretty wide range of, um, of input there. Then also, uh, from the social impact assessment, there were two high impacts that were noted from the social impact assessment for we, us to, um, address and evaluate. Both of those related to mine closure. We had three medium impact, um, issues ranging from community health and safety, economic, environmental related impacts. And then we had seven low impacts. Our top mitigation measures, um, continue to encourage and support local procurement opportunities. Which Hunter is actually responsible for, uh, helping with procurement. And continue to regularly engage with stakeholders, particularly regarding mine closure plans and environmental impact. So on the next slide, um, these are the two issues that were high impact. Again, they were both related to mine closure. Um, one was closure is a key, key concern as some community members are unaware of mine life enclosure plans. Um, obviously with this, we continue open, transparent conversations with closure plans. Evaluate methods of disseminating closure information, engage communities into finding needs and opportunities for continuation. Um, of social investment post-closure. So that's again, part of our post-closure plan. Uh, considering forming a community and advisory panel to create more transparency. Um, also continue developing and socializing the endowment fund and the legacy fund. So that's one thing that we're very proud of, the fact that we're already putting that away and planning for when we are no longer operating in the community and, and, um, contributing to the community. Um, we still have that fund which will be, uh, taking place of that. Also, in relation to closure, uh, closure causes sudden decrease in revenues that could deeply impact local municipal and social services. So again, this sort of goes along with, um, what we're doing right now with our community investment committee as well as our plans for the, um, the endowment fund. All right, um, here is just a little recap. We finalized, um, all of our two thousand twenty-two investments. So the Community Investment Committee, um, donated two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, uh, to local organizations. There were eighty applications received, which totaled a little over a million dollars for requests. We were able to approve fifty-nine of those applications and donate, uh, some funds to those, those causes. If anyone is interested in, um, asking for a donation for your organization. At the end of the slides, um, there is Caitlin Ragsdale's information, um, or our application is available on our website. Please feel free to reach out. Um, our next time that we are meeting for the Community Investment Committee is April twenty-seventh. So we just asked the applications are in by the twentieth, so we have enough time to get you on the agenda and process you. Um, also, we spent a little over fifteen thousand dollars in discretionary community funding. So if something didn't fit the, uh, qualifications for Community Investment Committee, we do have other funds, um, that were allocated for those things. For H fair purchases. So this was, uh, one thing we spent a little over, um, a little under eighteen thousand dollars. Went to the Fremont County Fair and the Teller County Fairs and bid on, uh, the four H, um, children's animals. And what we did then is we raffled, uh, those, um, those animals, the processed animals back to our employees who contributed to the legacy fund. Um, also, we, uh, do annual school grant funding every year. We give thirty thousand dollars each to Cripple Creek and Victor School District, as well as Woodland Park School District. Environmental support, we give fifty thousand dollars to Trout Unlimited for the Colorado Abandoned Mine Reclamation Program. Um, also, the Legacy Fund, a company match, so our employees alone contributed fifty-seven thousand dollars to local organizations this past year and our company matched that. So for a total of a little over a hundred and fourteen thousand. And then again, we also have the Endowment Fund, thirty thousand. And then we did have some money left over in our COVID relief fund, which we were able to contribute to the community, uh, partnership, Aspen Mine Center, uh, teacher appreciation breakfast at CCNV School District. And the Little Chapel Food Pantry. And the next slide is just a few highlights of some of those things that we did throughout the community. Um, we participated in, um, uh, sponsored Casa Light of Hope. Uh, we also, uh, served, um, breakfast or a holiday meal to the community at the Aspen Mine Center, uh, the backpack fence here in Woodland Park. Multiple Halloween events, including, uh, here in Woodland Park, uh, state of the county breakfast and many more things. This is just a, a little example for you. And then on our final slide, so, um, one thing we want to do, and we've heard from a lot of, uh, you already in the room, which is great. Uh, we did a community investment survey. So I have those printed out in the back of the room. If anyone would like to take them. I also have a QR code back there, just in case you want to scan it and, uh, do it on your phone. And if you're virtual and you wanted the survey, please feel free to email Caitlin down there on the bottom of the page. Uh, we are just doing the survey so that we can get a better understanding of the needs within the community. We've already, um, had some things pop up that we weren't necessarily realizing was that big of a hot issue with our community. So it's something our committee's looking at, but just these questions here, what is your perception of Newmont CCNV's community investment program? Do you feel Newmont provides value to the community? Why or why not? Please identify current needs and opportunities in your community that you would like Newmont CCNV's Community Investment Committee to consider. And again, if you have an organization that you would like to ask for funds for a donation, please feel free to go on our website and look for the Community Investment Committee application or email Caitlin Ragsdale for that application. And then also finally, we are, um, getting out there in the community more now that we are fully staffed. Um, there's two of us representatives as well as others. representatives, as well as others in the department. So we're getting out in the community more to being able to interact with the community more. So we started open office hours. They're going to be actually starting pretty soon. They're going to be at the Cripple Creek Heritage Center and at the Newmont Admin Office in Victor. We also have an open house coming up here in Woodland Park that is going to be at the U Cultural Center on May 25th from 5:00 to 6:30. So there's lots of information posted about that. And then all of our contact information is down there at the bottom. Caitlin is our supervisor for External Relations. I handle Victor, Victor Goldfield and Woodland Park, and then Hunter mainly handles Cripple Creek and Fremont County. And that's about it. Just any questions?
And Council, any questions or comments?
Sure.
Hi Andrea.
Hi.
Nice to see you again. I had a question or a comment when, when I first came to town, probably five or six years ago, I did the mine tour before COVID hit. Fabulous tour. And so where is your current, where are you at as far as mine tours for the citizens to kind of get an appreciation for what you do?
Thank you so much for bringing that up. I almost forgot to mention that. I did also bring, we have a self-guided mine tour just with COVID regulations, with productivity for the mine, with just the fact that we really can't cater to a ton of tours going through the mine with all the operations that we have going on right now. What we did is we created a self-guided mine tour. So it goes to three different locations around the mine where you can actually look in and see the mine operations. There's a QR code at each location or on the brochures in the back, there's a QR code. So you can actually go around and do the tour yourself. However, if you would like to come and do a tour, please feel free to reach out with your group. We will see if we can accommodate it. We can accommodate large tours, but you know, of course, for county officials and everything, we definitely would love to have you and would love to give you a tour. Okay.
Thank you.
Counsel, any further?
Thank you. Hunter, what was your last name? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Neil or Nakai?
Thank you very much.
Great presentation. Thank you very much.
For the information. Sorry, Rusty. I won't take you up on the tour though, because I'm claustrophobic.
Well, the self-guided tour might be a little bit more fitting for you then.
Probably.
Catherine, it's an open mine.
Yeah, okay. But okay. The, I'm thinking of the Molly Kathleen.
Oh, yeah, don't go.
Sorry, that's what I was thinking of.
I guess that's what the picture looks like, doesn't it? Yeah.
It does. It does.
Thank you for your presentation and for all that you do for the community. So and I did the tour, but I used to work there when it was Ashanti, so.
Okay, yeah.
Well, thank you. Thank you for having us.
All right, and we are on to number four, which we don't normally have, but this evening we have two deletions. Item nine B and 10A were removed from the agenda, and I believe we have one correction. The agenda you mentioned that we had.
Of the minutes.
And minutes, yes, not the agenda.
You found it.
Minutes.
You found it, yeah.
I don't have it.
Oh. We're on the consent agenda and then I'll start.
No, I, well, I was saying with the additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda. And then, yeah, so we have the
They're actually
I don't see the approval. I don't see the correction on the ascent.
No.
Yeah.
Yeah. If you're ready, I can introduce the consent calendar. So this evening on the consent calendar, we have two sets of minutes from the February 16th council meeting and the March 2nd council meeting. It was brought to my attention by one of the council members. There was an error in the minutes, and I did go back and I looked at them, and it is regarding Jerry Peddings. So I'm, I'm so used to Jerry talking about STRs that under public comments, when Jerry was speaking, I wrote that he spoke about STRs. But at the last council meeting, he did not speak about STRs. He spoke about the diversity on the Planning Commission, the need for diversity that people reflect, reflect the voice of the residents, etc. So I will make that amendment to the city minutes, council minutes. The second item is the approval of the February 2023 Statement of Expenditures. And Erin Vassalati is here if there should be any questions. Otherwise, can have a motion.
I just want also, you know, I saw a couple of typos. They're not, you know, they're not like fatal, but did you find any of this?
Yes, I did. Thank you.
And Suzanne, for clarification purposes, the correction on the minutes was the February 16th minutes, correct?
March 2nd, sir.
Oh, it was the March 2nd one.
Correct. So there being no, if there's no questions, I would entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes, the statement of expenditures, but the amended minutes for March 2nd.
I, if I make a motion. Before we do that, can we either separate them, or can I ask my question about the expenditures?
Sure.
Yep. So Erin, hi. There's an expenditure for the improvements to the U-Pass Cultural Center. And it's about $110,000 for the AV. And I thought the public would be interested in seeing the improvements there, because if they're considering renting the facility, it'd kind of nice to know what they're getting or we're getting for that. Is that possible either at this meeting or another meeting to do a video tour of it or something, or just somehow give us a report on that?
Well, and I think, I think Ben Schmin or our Public Works Director is best equipped to answer that question.
Oh, sorry about that. Yeah, right. Yeah, you're just the money guy. Sorry.
Yeah. So the, because of the long lead time of all the equipment that had to go in for the audio video for the U-Pass Cultural Center as part of that contract, when it was awarded, we had to pay for 80% of that equipment upfront, because most of the work is not the install, it's actually the equipment and functionality itself. So the planned timeline for that to fit in with all the other schedules of events, which is great that it's, it's booked, is going to be April 10th through the 14th. So if folks want to come in after that, or we can put together some sort of presentation as well to show, but with a lot of things in this day and age, we have to order them well in advance and pay for them to lock in the pricing.
Great. So in the future then, yeah, that's good. Thanks for clarifying that.
Of course.
I have no other comments on the go ahead, Kelly.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar with the amendment to the March 2nd minutes as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you, Council. You may vote. Thank you, Council. Motion is passed unanimously.
All right, we are off to item number six, which is public comment on items not on the agenda.
Mayor, I have this evening, the first person signed up to speak is Mr. Dan Taylor. Hello.
I need to say my name.
Of course.
Dan Taylor, 300 Willow Street, Woodland Park. Initially, I had quite a long presentation, but item 9B was deleted. Did you have something to say?
No, I didn't start the timer.
Okay. But so now I can be much more brief, because the reason I'm here is that what had happened was I reviewed the Planning Commission meeting of February 9th, when the Champion Express Car Wash gave a presentation. And I reviewed all the information that they had supplied. And I realized right away that there was a deception going on, and they were giving very little information. Some of it was inaccurate, and some of it was all right pulse. And so there was very good questions asked. They just weren't answered very well. And Planning Commission still ultimately decided to vote for recommendation. But in the meantime, I I've spoken with a distributor who was not surprised at this behavior at all. And as it turns out that he said, you know, this is a standard playbook for getting entitlements that these express tunnel car wash chains use quite frequently. And so I'm here just to give sort of a warning that I'm sure something like this is going to come up in the future again. If it's not the same company, it might be a different one. But please be well, how should I say?
Vigilant.
Yes. Ask the hard questions. Make sure you understand everything about it. You know, I know you can't be expected to understand the car wash business like I do, but you should ask questions until you do. And there's an interesting thing is that the two issues that Planning Commission came up with were exactly right. They were water and traffic. And those are the things that these companies don't want you to know, because there's a lot of traffic, and the total water use is tremendous. And I checked in Alamosa and Canyon City, where this company has car washes, and they're typically using 300,000 to 400,000 gallons a month. And interestingly enough, in December in Canyon City, this car wash uses 882,000 gallons of water. And we questioned, when we were calling the utilities department, said, whoa, that seems like a high number. He said, that's nothing. You should see the previous two months. So it turns out in December, the company used 1.6 million gallons of water. And in October is 2 million. So in the span of three months, this one car wash used more than a million gallons of water. That's a lot of water. All four of the car washes in Woodland Park for the last 12 months used 2,700,000 gallons for 12 months. So that gives you an idea. They know this stuff. This company has 30 car washes, 30 under development. They know they know this stuff inside and out and didn't tell you a thing. So.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor.
Yeah.
I'm pointing to clarification, if that's right.
Yeah.
Normally, we can interact with you, but when I was reading through the information, it said that there was, and I was going to ask this question, but it said there was like an 81% reclamation of that water. And so is that not accurate then?
First of all, it's extremely difficult to prove, because no one really measures how much water is going down the drain. We know how much is coming in. We don't know how much is going out. In my own automatic car wash right here in Woodland Park, I believe I'm right around that same 80, 75, 80% mark anyway. And that's a typical number, actually. But the interesting thing is that's really, doesn't even really matter, because the only thing that matters is how much water you're actually using. You know, the reclamation number doesn't, is sort of meaningless. So there's a, there's a, there's a very good formula for car washes, and that's number of cars times water per car use freshwater equals your water bill. And the nice thing about that is water bills are public. And so if someone's trying to skew something, you know, there's an equation there. So you cannot have low traffic, low water use, and a high water bill. Doesn't work.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor, the second person that's signed up, I'm not clear on what agenda item. It just says Verizon next to it. It's Mr. Pete Hitchcock. Is it an, is it one of our ordinances that you'd like to speak to? Okay, we'll call you when it's time. Thank you. And no one else, ma'am.
Okay. We have nothing on seven. So we are off to eight A, and we are looking at consideration of ordinance number 1444 on initial posting. And we have CJ Gates presenting.
Thank you, Mayor. This is first reading for a consideration of ordinance number 1444, series 2023 on initial posting. This is an ordinance granting a special use permit with a site plan review for the purpose of Verizon Wireless to construct and utilize a concealed antenna communication facility. Staff's recommendation is to approve ordinance number 1444, series 2023 on initial posting. An ordinance granting a special use permit with a site plan review for the purpose of Verizon Wireless to construct and utilize a concealed antenna communication facility in the public slash semi-public lands zone, and set the public hearing for April 6th, 2023. Thanks.
So, so Mayor, I spoke with the attorney, and he's going to kind of guide me through how I can ask the questions I have on this. What public input do we have about the locating of these towers? And are we reliant? And what public input can we have on that?
Unfortunately.
That question.
Well, as I understand it, your question is what is the process for receiving public input downstream with respect to this application?
There you go. Perfect. Yes, Councilmember. So when the, when the application was submitted to us, it got during our referral period, it gets passed around all of the departments within the city, and also the nearby residences within 150 feet of the site got a posting, or a mail posting, and also it got posted in the Pike's Peak Courier, so.
Excuse me.
That's Karen is online as well.
I also want to add that consistent with the city's zoning regulations, there is a, a notice that gets run in the Pike's Peak Courier that announces the date and time when the Planning Commission heard this very same request. And then a sign on the property also noting the hearings.
So I guess the rest will have to wait until the actual public comment. Thank you.
Council, can I get a motion then?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 1444, series 2023 on initial posting. It's an ordinance granting special use permit with a site review plan for the purpose of Verizon to construct the concealed antenna and set the public hearing for April 6th, 2023.
I'll second. Thank you, Council. Motion is passed unanimously.
All right, we're off to item B, consideration of ordinance 1443, which is the moratorium for the STRs and Jessica's on her.
Hello, Mayor and Council. This is, we've been around this block a few times. This is the latest proposal for extension of the moratorium relating to short-term rental applications. This latest extension would take the moratorium to December 31st, 2023.
Questions or comments for that one?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 1443, series 2023, as presented and sent the public hearing for April 6th, 2023.
I'll second.
Thank you, Council. You may vote.
Yeah, I don't think I care.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Council. Motion is passed unanimously. Thank you, Council. Motion is passed unanimously.
All right, we don't have, let's see, we are on to nine A. Ordinance fourteen forty-one. And that is re- replacing. The uh. This one is for the replacing the. The uh antenna that's currently behind City Hall, so that, yeah, so we're not confused.
Was behind City Hall.
Was behind City Hall. Sorry.
And this is the sixty-foot antenna, correct?
We'll let CJ tell us.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, and this is quasi judicial counsel, so we have to stay on topic.
We showed the screen up here, please, Sarah. Thank you. Okay, thanks. All right, that's all good. Thanks, Sarah. Thank you, Council. Um so my name is CJ Gates, representing the City Park uh. With our City of Woodland Park Plan Department. The application before you tonight is requested by Verizon Wireless uh for approval of a special use permit. For a temporary communication facility to provide service to the Woodland Park area. The facility in question is proposed to be constructed in the parking lot area of the Woodland Park City Hall located at. Two hundred West South Avenue within the center of town. The subject property is on public slash semi-public land and is bordered by Lake Avenue to the north. Pine Street to the west, Memorial Park to the east and City Hall, City Hall to the south. The proposed communication facility will be located within the northeast portion of the parking area. On the north side of Woodley, Woodland Park City Hall and to the west of the senior center, as you can see on the right hand of the side slide. On August seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two, the city of Woodland Park issued a temporary use permit to allow Verizon. To erect a temporary cell on wheels, also known as a cow, which can be seen uh to the left of the slide. To be set up in the parking lot on the north side of City Hall. The T U P was valid from August seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two to August twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two. And provided additional cell service specifically for the salute to American Veterans Bike Rally. Once the initial T U P period was complete, the applicant requested and was granted an extension that allowed the cow to continue to operate under T. Under the T U P through December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-two. Cow facilities are designed to be used for shorter temporary time periods. Verizon removed the cow facility in late of December tw- two thousand twenty-two and has began the process to request permits. Uh to a site permanent, to construct a permanent macro facility. The entitlement and construction process for the macro facility will take over a year to complete. Due to this timeline, Verizon is asking to erect a fifty-nine foot, six inch tall light. Tower in the same location as the cow had been located in order to bridge the gap until the new macro facility is operational. According to chapter eighteen, six one point zero two zero of the city, city of Woodland Park Municipal Code. Towers and antennas exceeding fifty feet in height require a special use permit. This current application is being processed as a special use permit. Due to the fact that the proposed antenna has a total height of sixty feet. So it's fifty-nine feet and six inches for the pole and additional six inches on the top of the antennas. As you'll see from a detailed area, aerial photo on the right hand of the slide. The cow and the the cow facility and the proposed facility will be located in the same position. On the current slide, you will see the proposed site plan. As for reference, in this area down below where my mouse is, if you guys can see that. Oh, I apologize about that. Uh is an existing building, which is the Woodland Park Senior Center. And on the top of the slide is Lake Avenue. The red and yellow lines in the center of the slide outline the route by which the proposed above-ground uh above-ground lines will be located. The yellow lines represent proposed fiber and power conduance conduits to be marked in bright reflective color. And mounted on C M U blocks every five feet. The red line represents the proposed overground R G S conduit run for power to the. From the proposed facility meter to the proposed cabinet. Staff and analysis, uh staff looks at municipal code section eighteen point six one point zero four zero in accordance with this application. The proposed should have direct public benefit to the city and this complies. The proposed development will not endanger the public health and welfare and this cur- and this criteria may comply. It may comply because the proposed site plan includes an above-ground surface electric power and telecommunications fiber lines. That runs from the locations east of the senior center to the proposed facility. As noted in the review of the proposed drawings, city standards require utility lines to be installed below ground. Additionally, surface insulation of electric and fiber lines are a danger to public health and welfare. The the proposed facility may comply if the proposed power and telecommunications fiber lines. Are installed in compliance with the underground installation requirements and cited in an appropriate easement. The development shall not ensure the value of vicinity properties and the standard standard complies. The development must be in harmony with the area and it does comply based on the zoning. The proposed development shall not con- shall conform to the city's comprehensive master plan. The proposal should conform to the city standards and the proposed proposal needs to be designed to accommodate traffic impacts. Items E and G on the slide comply while item F may comply. There are currently two significant concerns regarding the installation of the fa- fiber and power lines. The first is the application proposes these lines to be installed on the ground surface. The second concern relates to the location of the proposed easements. The proposed plan includes a five-foot wide power and utility easement on the north side of the site. However, this is not in compliance with city code. The proposed facility may comply with both of these issues if the utility lines are installed underground per city standards. And in an appropriate approved easement. Verizon has responded to this issue, referenced the applicant's response packet, which was attached within your staff report. The proposed development may be constructed appropriately as well as maintained properly. The facility must not increase public danger of fire and other dangers. Lastly, the development must comply with all required architectural design requirements. Items H through J on the slide comply while item K may comply. The applicant has provided architectural design schemes as a part of the site plan review. The applicant is proposing a temporary chain link fence that will secure the site. As an approval criteria, staff is proposing the applicant ensure all cabinetry and tower be a natural earth tone color. Applications were referred to the city departments and ex- external review agencies listed on the slide. The planning commission held a public hearing on February ninth of two thousand twenty-three. After consideration of the staff report and comments made at the public hearing. The planning commission voted unanimously to recommend city, city council to approve the special use permit. For a temporary communication facility to provide Verizon Wireless service to the area, subject to conditions. Staff's recommendation is that the city council move to approve ordinance number fourteen forty-one. Series two thousand twenty-three, an ordinance granting a special use permit with a site plan review. For the purpose of Verizon Wireless to construct and utilize a temporary cu- communication facility in the public slash semi-public zone. This concludes my presentation, Council, and I'm available for any questions.
So questions or comments?
Council members.
Three, um you're saying staff says recommendations with and the planning commission had. A restrictions or or uh conditions on that. I don't see a list of conditions.
Uh yes, sir, council member. Uh those conditions are la- uh listed within the ordinance that you received within the staff report.
Can you articulate them, please?
Yes, I will read them. So section one of this ordinance, the special use permit for a temporary communication facility is hereby approved. Uh subject to the following conditions. Number one. An agreement for the use of city property must be finalized and signed by all parties prior to the issuance of any zoning development permit. Number two, an updated site plan resolving all issues identified on the red line plans must be approved by the city before any Z D P will be issued. Number three, applicant must supply the city of Woodland Park an up-to-date certificate of liability insurance for the duration of the lease agreement. Number four, the facility and all associated utilities must comply with city specifications. Number five, easements must be finalized and located in compliance with city specifications and are subject to city approval. Number six, the facility must not be powered by a generator except for emergency or backup use. Number seven, the applicant must ensure all cabinetry and equipment located on the site be a natural earth tone color. Number eight, since this is a temporary facility, the special use permit will expire December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-four. Should an extension be desired, the applicant must can, must apply for an extension that will be processed per municipal code section eighteen point six one point zero five zero. Lastly, number nine, fencing satisfactory to the city shall be provided opaque screening of the installation.
So in layman's terms, that means that they do need to put the power underground. They need to put it in an approved easement, which is more than five foot. It's like, what is it, twenty or something, isn't it? What's our fin, what's the? What's a standard easement?
Easements vary for the utility service that's provided, but the logical easement would be to put it in the city right away in Lake Street. And coordinate it before that project was reconstructed.
So it's gonna go underground in the easement on Lake?
Uh that would be the logical choice for the easement to go in there.
Okay. And the uh other red lines was the um. So we're not gonna have a bunch of cinder blocks across with a with a line above ground. Great, right.
That's correct.
And then the other thing that I saw was um is the only obscuring of that our only option chain link fence? Can we have cedar or redwood or something like that fence around that? So it's not drawn an eyesore.
Um council member, I think that'd be a great question for the applicant. They would ultimately have to approve that as well.
Well, is that a condition for the city or can it be?
Um I. Yeah, Karen.
Absolutely. Um great question and planning commission was very concerned about that as well, which is reflected in condition number nine. Where it says fencing satisfactory to the city shall provide opaque screening of the installation. Um so we have not talked in detail with the applicant about materials. Uh but city council here this evening can certainly um make a more specific recommendation rather than just opaque screening. Um because we all know, um you can pretty much see through um chain link. And so um yeah, another material could certainly be specified.
Okay, so I'm. Are you, is that like, can we just add that to this? Is that what we, is that how that change would be made to say, to say that it would be either a cedar or redwood or something? Do you guys be okay with that?
Well, you can even do a chain link with that cloth that's in between. That would take it to be a a much more opaque. In other words, you wouldn't be able to see it. Would that be adequate trying to find a cost efficient? I mean, more cost efficient than something as permanent as what you're suggesting, Robert? Would that be possible?
Well, and that's also another consideration would be putting fence posts in a co- in a asphalt. Parking lot.
Oh, no, not putting fence posts in, but just putting it over. You have an overlay. We have to look at it for a year, bottom line. And we had to listen to a generator for.
No.
A year.
Generator's gone.
I know, but I, but we still have to do it for a year. So the thing is, it's like aesthetically, wood is a, is is much more appealing to the eye. Than a chain link fence is what I'm suggesting. So and you can put it.
Be an issue with flammability. So I think that that conversation with material would probably need to be discussed with Verizon. Just because it's high, high electronics, there's a lot going on. I don't know what the flammability issue could be with putting wood up next to it.
And and council, we do have the applicant here uh in person, so uh they, you can invite them up and uh.
Oh.
Well, I'd rather have them have.
Great.
A discussion about the materials used. Cause I don't want to just ignorantly say wood fence around a giant electronic antenna.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Harrison. Uh I represent Verizon Wireless. Thank you for allowing us to present this evening and thank you, CJ. Um Verizon is proposing a temporary light site um at the rear city hall. This is intended to bridge um the coverage need, especially in the summer. As we work to permit and lease our macro facility at the aquatic center. Um I'm here happy to answer any questions. I did want to address um findings F. Section five two point one one, even in the finding states, the telecommunications service lines can be surface laid on a temporary basis not to exceed. Three months. City of Woodland Park also um utilizes P P R B D for all building permit review. P P R B D additionally um does allow for above-ground temporary service lines for a period of up to one hundred and eighty days. Uh the reasoning behind uh asking that we run the the lines above ground. Is if we disturb the ground, we have to uh run a N I P A for any ground disturbance and that would. Uh run about four to six months these days and that would delay deployment of the light site. Past the start of summer, so we wouldn't be able to deploy in time for the start of the the busy season. So if if we could initially comply with code and do a temporary above-ground. Uh utility run, we could then come back once our N I P A uh has been granted and and bury those.
So you are willing to go ahead and eventually. Bury those.
Yes, we are.
But my question to uh, this is to Karen Schminke. Um so we would literally tear up those that sidewalk or they would tear up the sidewalk to put in the temporary. Because as I'm looking at it, it looks like it goes behind the. Um well, it looks like it's running down a sidewalk as it's going from the towers and going from west to east. I know there's a couple zigzags in there, but it appears that it's tearing up a lot of concrete and um. Asphalt to put this in. Is that correct?
My recollection from the site plan is that they were really trying to avoid all of that. And I believe and uh Ms. Harrison can probably explain this. I believe that they're uh outside the concrete and running through a a grassy area on the north side of the senior center. Um and then with the city engineer, you know, in terms of the the more permanent. Um yet temporary underground installation, trying to run that, I think primarily in the right away. Uh but get that in uh well in advance of um or trying to coordinate that with the summer's construction project. So you, there are a couple of things um colliding here, so it's a pretty tight dance that we're all trying to, trying to accomplish. Um to get the 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 lines in place um and and be able to to service the tower um to serve Woodland Park. To rest and answer your question.
It it did. I mean, it does look like it's possible to be on the grass. I I guess my position is I I personally would not make it a a requirement for for the length of this temporary use. I know it's longer than what we have in the city code. Um we're doing this for for health and safety. I mean, the county commissioners asked. Verizon to put this in so that we could improve our our public safety. So I'm trying to get it in as fast and as cheap as possible. Um I do understand the health risk of somebody tripping on the above ground. But when I I weigh that in where it's being positioned with how we can barricade it or protect it with blocks and things like that. And and colored markings so people don't trip on it. Yeah, just tearing up things to to tear them up just because we have it in a city code for a temporary, just to me doesn't make sense. But I'm open to listen to the other council members' position on it.
I'm I'm gonna let our city attorney weigh in here briefly.
Oh, great, great idea.
Was it your position that a a approval under the national?
Was it your position that a a approval under the National Environmental Policy Act was required before you could trench in the grassy area?
Correct.
Could you provide us what authority for that position? Not now, just send us some legal authority to support the position that NIPA requires prior approval before you do a trench.
Sure.
The other question I have on this is. Your request is asking us to waive city code. I think it's a health issue to have this above ground personally. But I have another uh, question that is. There are multiple carriers and other carriers have the capacity to put in things. To meet the need that we have for health and safety. And I know one of your competition is actively engaged in that process in town. So. Saying that this pushes us past a a four month period wherever this application you guys have been working on for quite a while. So why should we be asked as a city to waive our health and safety to expedite this? When that's a planning, that's you know, that's an organizational planning issue and you've had, you've had more than a year to get those pieces moving.
Well, the site and the complaints and the and the news articles and whatnot all came up over the summer. So it hasn't been quite a year yet that we've been working this project, but um. So there is, as I stated in code, there actually is a provision that will allow for above ground utilities. So we're not asking that that be waived necessarily, but. Um, in order to deploy the light site in time for summer. Uh, if we were to to bury the utilities, it would trigger a NIPA review that would push us past that date. So it's more um. It's a statement uh, that we will likely miss uh, a beginning of summer deployment should we bury the utilities.
So there's nothing to stop us moving through this process with what we have in our code. And you continue to get the approvals necessary, i- if in fact the what the attorney said in actual fact, you do have to get this clearance. You may not. So so if you do not, then you bury it. So. So what's the possibility then of us uh, staying with our city codes? And our ordinances and our engineering specs. And uh, if it's three months, then it's just three months. It's not a year.
Correct. So the hope would be uh, if we have final approval on the design uh, in the next. Hopefully four to six weeks, depending on the the final process for the lease and whatnot. We can get the NIPA rolling. And then when we and deploy the site, we would then have the three months of allowed above ground utilities while the NIPA is being completed. And at that point, the hope would be NIPA would come in and at the end of that three months or possibly before, we're burying the utilities at that time.
And that's what I was just going to clarify with you is that what you're asking and what you're telling us is your plan of attack. And what you'd like us to go along with, if you will, is that you need the time to comply with what you need to do. To put things in the ground. And you're asking us to allow you to to go ahead and install the site. And then when you get the clearances you need, you'll bury.
Exactly. Allow us to come in, provide the service at the beginning of summer and then come back in at a later date and bury those utilities. Thank you.
Robert, does that kind of, is that, are you willing to go with that? I mean, I I'm curious what the public has to say about it. I don't know how many people are there to speak on it, if anybody.
Uh, we we do have one person signed up at least for this topic.
Okay, well, I guess my final thoughts will be based on what that person has to say, but Robert did. Would that work for you?
Let's let the public speak.
So also you can, you know, you can clarify with staff what their opinion is about that. And also if um, council isn't comfortable with that idea. I would hate to delay it further, but we can also say, well, we can table it until they have an answer about NIPA. So not saying that that's what I want to do. I'm just saying that's an option for council to understand. The other thing is, we asked about the opaque barrier. So could we have your opinion on the materials that can be used?
Sure. Thank you. So since this is temporary fencing, there won't be any footings poured or and anything that would, you know, give us much structural support.
Yeah.
Um, the option would be to install a chain link fence with kind of the fabric uh. Interlay.
Yeah.
And it has little slits that allow wind to pass through. Um, anything much more. Structurally robust will require an act like that it be a permanent fence.
Sure, especially because of the wind up here.
Yes.
So be like a woven. The woven chain link fences that you see.
Yeah, the cloth cloth pattern will be to the links themselves.
Yeah, which is understandable because it's got to be temporary. Okay, so then council, do you want to ask that question to staff about the bearing? Uh, because their recommendation is that it be buried. Or.
Before they start?
Yeah.
Ben, would you tell us your thoughts? Because I'm tending to think that that's a a fair way to go about. Uh, accommodating the service that we need for the summer months. Um, and then they've committed to bury uh, just as soon as they can. And uh, what is, how does that sound for you? What does that feel like or not feel like? But what are your thoughts on that, please?
Thank you. I certainly understand your position and and working through that process. Um, so the big concern I had with waiting until the NIPA process was cleared to bury later on is the Lake Street project. Will likely be starting at the same time. And once that road is completed, there is a moratorium on that roadway. For two years. And so if the NIPA process uh, concludes after that road is milled and overlaid, then that. Puts everything in kind of a pickle. So uh, the one solution we'd had was city staff had worked with Core and set up a meeting with Verizon. To see if there was a possibility to share a trench ahead of time for the. Because to to take a step back, Lake Avenue can be cut right now before any construction starts. And there's ways staff can work together because the road's going to be redone anyhow. So the repair and remediation doesn't need to be as robust as it does. With typical right away permits. And so if Core were to come in and work with Verizon to install a spare conduit to that same location. Uh, and they could do it under the franchise agreements with uh, Verizon to install that line there. Then when the tower was removed, that line could that that conduit could be reused for a temporary charging station. And it would all still be within the city right away. Uh, the big concern with any other variation outside that easement next to the right of ways, it's a steep hillside for one. So restoration's a challenge. And then two, there are those large old growth trees. And in my six years of utility experience, if you cut the root, the tap line along the tree there, it kills the trees. And so is the idea is to try to get around those and come up with a solution ahead of time.
Okay, very good.
So you're actually saying then that what they have on their design on their red and yellow lines is not. The the path that you would be recommending for the underground um, route to go. You would say it would go like straight up to lake, a long lake or something. How how would that look?
If it's undergrounded, that would be the path to match the easement language in the city code.
And then how is it going to connect? I I didn't see a picture of that on any of this here. So. Instead of going across down like this, it's going to go up. And then across and down. Is that what's going to happen like a?
So currently the uh, pull box where they're pulling the fiber off and the power drop right there is right next to the the road right away. It's a, it's adjacent to the sidewalk. Um, if you remember the summer, they opened one of the pull boxes to bring it off that feed. And so instead of taking it down the hill, you can take it along the roadway. And then there would be a small section of easement that would need to be granted down the hill that could be worked in through the agreement. Um, but that would also, that could also be future easement for a future uh, charging station conduit as well if that. Conversation happened with Core.
You can put that slide back up. I think it's, it pretty much shows the lines where it could go if you wanted to do that. Robert. Well, I would you'd like to see that slide again?
Yeah, be great.
Yeah, because I mean, that that makes a lot of sense, just going straight up to lake.
And then across.
And then straight across uh, as you go to the east.
Yeah. That's sweet.
So if I could add one note, um, the route that we're showing is the above ground route. We tried to tuck it behind the sheds and and kind of down and along buildings to. To keep it as out of the way as possible. The underground route should be proposed, it would um, follow it. And it said it, we would go immediately north and then run east along lake.
Okay.
Do you have a feeling what the? Um, potential for Core to go along with that? Do you, do you have a sense of what that might look like?
So we've been in touch with Josh Sandio with Core.
Okay.
Um, we've had a number of conversations about this. Um, Josh advised that Core prefers to run their easements on private property and not in right away. Uh, he also said that their easement process is extremely lengthy, that it wouldn't likely be a shareable easement. In time for our deployment schedule or hoped deployment schedule. Um, so we are willing to work with Core, but I don't know that it's going to be an option for us uh, just due to their. Requirements and their timeline and their kind of lengthy process for these things for easements.
So then my question for you, Ben, is what's your timeline on uh, ripping up lake? And are you already working with Core on some of the construction work there?
Uh, so currently Core is just a stakeholder stakeholder, excuse me, uh, because their lines are below ground there that we would just have to avoid the lines. We we don't have any further communication uh, with Core as far as lake or coordination efforts. Uh, as far as lake is concerned, the main thing, this was just a a kind of good faith effort on the city's part to try to bring Verizon and Core together. If there was a future install of that charging station to try to make the two projects align so that they could. Uh, have the option to get this done quicker. And so uh, there are potentially a couple of options that uh, we could look at for the Lake Avenue corridor. Uh, installing some additional conduits, but that would uh, be a memorandum of uh. Or an agreement between the city and Verizon for the use of those. Um, those are things we could explore as well. Uh, to set it up so that in the future, if the NIPA didn't happen at the time that it was supposed to after Lake was already installed, there's conduit already there. That could be pulled through. So that's one potential solution to this uh, as well if the core solution falls through. Um, so.
So yeah, it can't be expedited really is my my question. Do you she sounds like she's got a timeline that she's working to. You've got a a groundbreaking timeline on lake. Can the two of those are is, do you see that those are going to kind of? Sync sync together, whether you do it with Core, you do it independent of Core and you do an agreement with Verizon. Is that something that can happen in the timeline they're looking for?
Uh, that's potentially something that could happen. My recommendation would be if we want to ensure that there is the option, regardless of the timelines. Align or not, is to incorporate a spare conduit for that run in the plan sets now. Separated as a separate line item and create an agreement that that line item will be paid for by a third party Verizon. That that would be the safest route to make sure that there was that option there. And I'd have to work with uh, Jeff to our city attorney to figure that out.
Now, it's your, it's further your um. Uh, argument that you would need a NIPA review to do a street cut permit, right? That's your position, that you need a federal National Environmental Policy Act approval to do a street cut permit in Woodland Park.
When Verizon disturbs the ground, any on any level, we have to to get NIPA, yes.
Okay.
We do it for every every site, which is part of the reason that these temporary sites are allowed to be deployed so quickly is because we aren't disturbing the ground in most cases.
Go ahead.
In one of the. Uh, correspondence in the package. It said above ground. Is there anything that could be done on a pole level? Um, can the power be taken up to a uh, power pole and run across? Or is that not available in that area?
So I actually have my architect available to chat. Uh, we did look at that and it's not an option, but he can speak to that. A bit more than I can.
Hey, good evening, council. Um, yeah, so basically would have to be approved by Core. We couldn't place another above ground wood pole, run a line over to our site. That would all have to be done by course, not something we could do because to stab that pole, we have to disturb the ground and we run the same kind of NIPA process and catch weight too.
You would need NIPA to put power above ground or to put a pole as well?
Same thing where we'd be drilling to uh, put the pole in. Be disturbing ground. Yeah, it's uh, Matt Fleck.
Thank you.
I'm with uh, Kim Lee Horn.
It just seems like this is, we're making this a lot harder than it needs to be to get a temporary. Cell tower to benefit our client, our our citizens of Teller County in general and and our visitors that come through. So let me, what do we, what's the answer here? I think we have to find a compromise. I'm sorry, Hillary. Well, you can either, you can either vote to approve it as is, as staff recommends. Or you can vote to approve it with the modifications Verizon is asking for. Or you can table it until we have further information about NIPA. But either way, that stalls time on getting things done. So. My my personal recommendation is to um, approve it as staff recommends. Because they're the experts for our community. So.
So tell us what the recommendation is. The the condition is to bury it. Is that the staff's recommendation for approval?
Yes.
But it, does that mean they would initiate, do they have to bury it before they can even get a temporary? In other words, they they have a few months to do.
Forgot. So if I could say just one thing.
Sure.
So the condition for states, the facility and all associated utilities must comply with city specifications. City's own specifications allow for three months of above ground utility install. We can do that, right? And we can do our best to have that NIPA cleared. If we, if we run the NIPA prior to install, because we have a fully approved design, we can kick off our NIPA right then. Then we install at some point later, the start of summer. At that point, NIPA is already processing and we have three months then to bury our utilities. We are in full compliance with your code at that point.
I'd like to hear your cooperation with our engineer in terms of his suggestion for laying pipe in. On lake and I haven't heard any willingness there yet. So could you give us some assurance that the plan? That the city engineer is is proposing for lake and the disturbance of lake. That as you get your NIPA clearance, that you will in tandem be uh, doing the agreements with the city for. The uh, burying of that cable in the in the Lake Avenue.
I think I would have, I mean, I haven't seen, so up until this point, I I wasn't fully aware that Verizon was being asked to lay conduit. In the lake right away. That's.
Ben, when does, when do you anticipate the Lake Avenue project starting?
Uh, likely by the time we get everything aligned, it will be uh, June or July.
And that's, if you start the NIPA process now, we very well could be coordinated with Lake Avenue to bury. Correct? If you had approval now with the three months above ground, right? That's April, May, June.
Correct.
Potentially, we could have the approval that you're looking for to coordinate with the Lake Avenue project after your three months. To possibly make things work.
I think we could do that. I so NIPAs are running four ish, four to five months right now. Um, so yes, we would want to get get that underway as soon as possible. Um, but definitely we want to work with with Ben to, you know, to make this work.
Can we do that, counsel? Jeff, everybody? Can we, can we, can we count on him to do their jobs and do the right thing and make it work together?
Uh, I think we need to make sure we inspect what we expect and Jeff is asking for the NIPA. And what we're all the the legal language of that is and what requirement. I would just not like to see, and I like the compromise. I like this idea. I'm a little concerned that um this could drag on and then you're out of compliance with the city and then we could find ourselves in a situation where you're violating our code and you have to turn it off. That wouldn't work too good. So I just like to make sure we have all the dots crossed and the eyes dotted here legally so that you do comply with what what we're suggesting here.
Jeff, would you give me your input? On where your position is, do you have one? Okay, thank you. I'm not gonna force you. Thank you.
Jeff, could you turn off your microphone, please?
I beg your pardon?
Could you turn your microphone?
Turn it off?
No, on.
Sorry, Rusty.
That's okay.
No, I think earlier the options were identified. Approve with Verizon's requests, approve as staff recommended or table it until later and get more information.
I don't want to ask Verizon to do things that aren't, they have no contractual obligation to. Like them just saying, yeah, we, yeah, agreeing here right now, it's on the record, but it's not a legal, you know, contractual obligation. So and I see some hesitancy from our engineers about where the above-ground cables are going to be laid. And um so.
Yeah, how would we, I I mean, the ordinance as written does have the city specifications, but it doesn't specify whether which option that we've talked about. You know, the the three months above ground um following the along the north side of the senior center or is it going straight up and we're hoping for a conduit uh that parallels lake? Is there some legal document that we can have on the record where Verizon is committing a first effort or their first effort would be the conduit along lake? And then if it doesn't, then they're still stuck with the thirty-day limit and then they bury it per the plan that they have presented here.
I'm gonna go ahead and let Ben address this.
So I think the big thing is the agreement that was part of the of those conditions for approval. That would outline all of these steps showing, yes, it would be above ground for the maximum amount of amount of time while they're pursuing the NEPA to go and we just need to make sure that that's all clarified explicitly in the agreement before that's executed. I think that's, that would be the big defining document that would outline all of this and and be legally binding.
And so basically, the ordinance could be voted on as written because it does say complaints with the city, the the uh the item number four um condition. And then in the agreement document, you could come up with the language that puts the emphasis on, you know, you've only got three months above ground, so you know, it's approved to go down parallel like Robert suggested, go straight up and and over, that would be our ideal scenario.
So the council can give staff direction to draft that agreement.
Correct.
By approving this ordinance and the recommendations presented this evening.
And and just as another point, that there is a draft agreement already available. It would just be making sure that that particular point is defined in that agreement.
And Ben, would you support as as a staff recommendation? Would you support that position if Council so chose?
Yes.
Okay, so I piece I have in this mix is so Verizon is pretty clear on what they need to do from their side. Our city attorney has asked for confirmation of some of the um uh requirements from from NEPA. Is there any downside for us to table this till the next meeting till we have that information? Everybody knows where they need to go with this. It's not like it's not going to happen. But it seems to me like we would have more pieces nailed in if we, everybody knows where they need to go. We're moving in that direction, but maybe we don't have, we're not exactly ready on this from my perception of it. And it and I guess my question would be legally, is that gonna hinder your process at all uh for that installation? You've heard here where it's all moving. You've heard the requirements from the requests from our attorney. So whether you have this ordinance today or you have this two weeks from now, is that gonna make any difference to the this, to things moving forward?
We don't meet again till for three weeks.
Say again?
I just want to say we don't meet again for three weeks.
Three weeks, right.
Ben?
And sorry, if I if I may also advocate in that because these NEPA processes take so long and because we know the direction that we need to to move for that agreement. Um, I think it would be beneficial for the applicant to be able to start that process as soon as possible and move forward with their plans as soon as possible. Time is perspective on that.
Oh, so your your recommendation to us is go ahead and do this, you've got enough in place in terms of what the city requirements are? And you you're saying that you're you're good with this?
Yes.
All right, okay. Well, that answers my question.
And you can still follow up with Jeff.
Of course, and we, NEPAs are absolutely required, so I will be providing you the backup for that.
And also, Ben, if if even though we've seen the diagram of where the above lines may run, if you have a better placement or idea, I'm sure Council would be, you know, content to let you move them without us having to reapprove that kind of thing. Yeah, it's your job, so you want to, if you need to protect trees, please do so. I know it sounds a little silly and we don't, we don't often say that because we deal with a lot of building and planning, but you know, we want them to be in the best place possible, so. But if it interferes with sidewalks and such, and then that creates a danger, you guys know the best thing to do, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think the goal is to to get the process moving as as quickly as possible from both ends. Adhere to the city code and and work with the applicant and yeah, the applicant has been very open in working with the city staff and trying to get this moving and coming up with a solution.
Very good.
I was just trying to explain the full backstory of of what we've been, what other options when looked at.
Sure.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't get your backstory on our diagram, so that's.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
Okay. And everybody's okay with the fence they need to do and.
Mayor, I just need to remind you, we have public comments still.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so we're gonna go ahead and take public comment now and then after that we'll get a motion.
So first we have Mr. Hitchcock.
Hello, my name is Pete Hitchcock. I'm a Woodland Park resident. We own lots five through eight directly to the north of these properties. Uh, they are vacant land at the moment and a couple of concerns of mine are what is temporary, what is temporary according to the municipal code? Uh, one of the members of the Planning Commission last month did note that a special use permit does not extend beyond a calendar year. Uh, but you guys are looking to grant a special use permit that is close to two years in duration. Um, the municipal code is also missing some rules for cell towers. Uh, specifically setbacks to residential neighborhoods. Uh, the proposed temporary cell tower may be on public semi-public land, but it does abut urban residential zoning. And as proposed, the cell tower will be roughly eighty feet away from the building pad on our residential lots. Uh, only towers that are fifty-foot tall are addressed as needing a special use permit in public semi-public zoning. The municipal code is lacking regulations for towers, specifically cell towers. What zoning districts are they allowed in? How far should they be set back from other zones? Restrictions for interrupting views, these are some of the items that should be considered. Woodland Park has strict regulations for building heights, which I believe is to protect the natural beauty and views of the community. The structure will not be unnoticed and it will be nearly double the height of anything surrounding it. Uh, the Planning Commission is supporting this special use permit, even though it doesn't meet all the standards of eighteen point six one point zero four zero. Specifically, item C, substantial injury to the value of vicinity properties. The loss of an unobstructed Pike's Peak view is a substantial injury. The cell tower with its expanded top will significantly alter the view from both our land and the homes to the east and to the west. Pike's Peak unobstructed views significantly increase the value of both residential land or homes in Woodland Park in Teller County. The injury is real and it extends well beyond the intended purpose of a special use permit. One of the Planning Commission members acknowledged the substantial injury and did amend the council's end date, which was originally December of twenty twenty-five and shortened it by a year to December of twenty twenty-four. There are other areas in the city that could have less of an effect on residential zoning and the aesthetics of Memorial Park. And maybe they have better infrastructure to support the temporary tower without requiring variances to the building code or speculation that within three months, you'll be able to meet the regulations of the city zone or the what the city states needs to be done to approve this project. Uh, it would be prudent for other sites to be evaluated, which could better meet all the standards of a special use permit. Speculation for a private company when there's other competition out there seems like we should take the due diligence to follow the municipal code to a T.
Thank you. And do you have anyone else signed up?
No questions?
No, thank you. Actually, just just for you, so that you know, when we um have public comment with Council, we have a rule that we don't have a back and forth between Council and um the public. And if the public has like technical questions, we direct that towards staff. So that way it prevents Council and and the public from getting into back and forths that sometimes get out of hand.
Yep, that makes sense. Planning Commission asked questions last, last.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, but that was very informative. Thank you.
Four, I have two others. I just want, Mark Weaver had his hand up, but now it's down. Mark, did you want to speak? Okay, he um does, I guess he doesn't, but then I got, I just got a late online request from, and I don't know how to say the name, it's S A I. L P L A signed up to speak. So I don't know if you say that sigh. And I I don't see them online, but they just sent a request and they wanted to speak this evening. That's it, we've given them both a chance and neither one, okay, wants to speak.
Yeah, and and I'm watching, there's no hand going up from anybody on Zoom.
Correct.
Well, I'm um I'm very appreciative of that because it really, uh, this resident has expressed some of the concerns I had and I didn't know what the right approach was on this. And that is, well, one is he said from a building uh pad and so that doesn't count to my mind if it's temporary of of actual vision from from a somebody's residence. So I would be interested in to know, is there a radius to light of sight of of homes that are affected by this proposed tower and how many homes are affected by that? And obviously, if they're they're not here, that might speak for itself, but it does really bring up the question that's been kind of gnawing away at me and that is we, to my knowledge, haven't really had a say of where this tower, temporary tower is going to go as this, as a community. We've been kind of recommended this by by the uh cellphone uh provider. And what is the process in here? Maybe Ben, you could answer that. What is the process in terms of our recommendation of location uh for least impact to the community? Um, do we have a say in that process or that is that outside of what we are? When these requests come to us, is that outside of what can be looked at?
Uh, so this particular request, uh, the city staff didn't really have a position on this specific location. This is a pretty complex algorithm to find out exactly where the service needs to be based on your existing communication towers. And there are engineers that specialize their whole career in finding out where these locations are. Um, so I think that was really the driving factor was delivering the best quality service from that location. That's what they were really trying to achieve by that location. And so uh for staff to direct them to move it would have compromised their look or the the service level that they were trying to achieve.
Um, can I ask the service level that's gonna be over by the pool? So what, I'm having a hard time understanding why we're doing this.
Hang on before, Ben, before you answer that, this is quasi judicial and that's a tad off topic, so we want to be careful.
Yeah, it's a different, it's a different uh it's it's just this application, it's the only one we can address, right? I agree.
So, excuse me, should, to add to that, um, Councilmember Connors, a great question. And that would be completely appropriate for the public hearing uh for that facility and and not for for this one at this point in time.
I I would like to hear from from Verizon on how you triangulate or whatever that, whatever Ben is talking about that is uh the skill set of a unique group of engineers. Can you give us an idea of uh why? How you came to that location as opposed to somewhere less uh less invasive?
So sites need to be very safe to the area in which they are providing service. It and when we were first looking at this temporary site, when we did get the original temporary use permit, it was to service the POW ride. And this was going to be very central to that. Um, and then when we began discussing a longer-term temporary site, uh, because we'd had utilities and this location worked, we ultimately pursued um this site. We did look at the U-Pass Cultural Center. From a utility perspective, this made more sense. Um, it's also a little bit more central to the higher um concentrations of people during the summer. So what we're looking for is to have a site that is centrally located and can have as many customers as we possibly can.
Our understanding was that your approach by Eric Stone, Commissioner Eric Stone from Teller County, and the concern was our firefighters and our sheriff's office were not getting the necessary ability to respond to nine-one-one calls in Teller County, not Woodland Park and Teller County. And that that is the request that you guys initially put up a temporary tower. Uh, I'm not sure what you mean about a bike rally.
I I think that had a lot to do with public safety and their responses in this area. And our police were, Michael, help me remember, but I remember that that was the the service in our area. And I know that our lock boxes were compromised. I couldn't open lock boxes on weekends. Um, and I think that was the deal, the ambulance service, the fire and our police and sheriffs in this area.
And it, and Ms. Harrison can correct me if I'm wrong, but um it it's a compounding effect that we had at the time because of all the traffic on Verizon's network. It impacted public safety, but because the rally drives such an influx of people into town that are not normally here that put further strain on the network. Is that generally how that went?
Yes.
And so Verizon brought in the Cal to help ex- expand that network. So it is public safety, but um by the time we got everything together, Verizon had all its approvals and everything to Cal. It was at the time of the rally, but the problem was existing earlier in the summer. But that was kind of the straw that broke the camel's back, as it were. Um, then to to Verizon's credit, they did explore a a number of different sites, including UPCC. I think even some time ago, we explored the water towers uh up on the fringes of our community and those didn't quite meet that centrality requirement that Verizon had. But they did make an effort to evaluate other sites to to their defense.
Well, and that's funny, I just, um, my question is, if you're doing that for the bike rally, is this meeting the need of Teller County and the Teller County Sheriff's Office and Regional Fire for reaching the perimeters of Teller County from this site?
This site will not reach the perimeters of Teller County, no. But it does provide much-needed service and E-nine-one-one services for Central Woodland Park, so.
Okay. Have have the, Kelly, maybe, you know, have the commissioners weighed in on it's on the location of this?
Well, I think they, they were assisting and and confirming that they too, when in this area, were experiencing the inability to access the ability to make a call. Um, I, as I said, Realtors, we had, I couldn't access lock boxes here in town. I could out I could out remotely, um, with phone service outside of Woodland Park. Um, but here in the core of downtown, it was affecting everything, including ambulance, dispatch. Uh, fire and our police officers. And, and I think they just were on board to support us and help us. Communicate to Verizon, the level of effect that that lack of service was, or the inability to get on the network. Was compromising so many in public safety. So they did that to support us.
And I don't know if the, the problem of network accessibility was county wide, or if it was just concentrated in Woodland Park. I don't recall this being a county wide issue.
Oh, yeah, it was thanks to Eric that it was, it's thanks to Commissioner Stone that you guys were mobilized, from my understanding. So it, it wasn't us that initiated this. It was Eric Stone from, uh, Commissioner Stone.
So last summer, woodland park proper was one of our highest complaint areas, uh, customer complaints. So we, we, we have to look at big picture. We definitely heard from the commissioners. There were a number of news articles published. Uh, stating, you know, the issues with, with service here in the town. Um, but we also have customers that are calling in and letting us know that they're struggling to make calls and, and carry calls. Um, I will say, if you're looking to do county wide, uh, service and coverage. Uh, one site could never handle the traffic of an entire county. You have to have a network of sites that it kind of hand off to each other as you're traveling through the county. Uh, so what we're trying to do is offload the, the site that is southwest of town, uh, up on the ridge. Um, right now that site has way too much traffic. Uh, when, when we have sites with way too much traffic, what we do is we come in and we centrally locate. Sites that can take the traffic off of that site that's essentially seeing too much and carrying too much, and that's what we're doing here.
So then, uh, this site will help, uh, signal to divide, is that where like the next? One in your link is, I mean, aside from the one up on the, on the mountain. Divide is the next one going out into Teller County.
The next town. And it's, uh, separated, I'm assuming by foothills or mountains, correct? Or is that?
Yes.
I'm actually not complete. So the signal cannot. Propagate through mountains. Um, that's why essentially. When we first come in and you, you're, you're kind of high and you're covering everybody. As the population starts to go up and traffic is overloaded, you start to locate more centrally. Again, you're going to be, because we're in kind of a bowl that contains the signal. So then we would go into the next town and place a site to provide coverage there. Uh, again, this is all, you know, developed by our RF engineers. They determine the greatest need. Um, and then I come in and find a site that makes sense in terms of, here's where we need coverage. Where, where can we make a site work?
Let me just make a reminder here, this is a special use permit application, so we should focus on the criteria. For award or denial of that application.
Thank you for answering.
Thank you. Anything further, counsel?
Did you close the public hearing?
Are we done? We've been done with public comment, yes. Let me just, can't, Councilmember Nikai or Councilman Neil, anything to add or any questions?
I got, yeah, the only, the only thing I have, so the, because we've gone back and forth here, I've lost track. Um, the ordinance before us. From planning, does it, does it recommend that? Uh, Verizon get the above ground for three months or, or when they get the NEPA and then they bury it? Or is that what Verizon is asking us to amend?
Catherine, I can read the language because I have it right in front of me.
Okay, thanks.
The, the condition says, i- and this is number four, the facility and all associated utilities must comply with city specifications. So as a testimony from the Verizon representative was. Our own municipal code, our, our city specifications allows them three months before they have to go underground. It would be the agreement where we pursue language that we could, um, do a direct, uh, up to Lake Street.
Okay, alright. That's all I had.
And hopefully my answering Catherine's question, I didn't hear anybody object to my explanation because that's my understanding. Um, and if my understanding it stands, then I'm, I'm prepared to vote on the, the ordinance.
Ben, was that your understanding?
Yes, that was.
Okay.
Alright, so then I moved to approve the ordinance fourteen forty one, series twenty twenty three. Um, and ordinance granting a special use permit with a site plan review for the purpose of Verizon to construct and utilize a temporary. Communication facility in the public semi public land zone. Per the, uh, city engineers, uh, recommendations and, uh, following with, along with city requirements.
I'll check at that.
I'm not getting it, Suzanne.
Okay, um, would you be willing to do a verbal vote?
I vote yes.
Thank you, council motion, motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you. Uh, I want to get to see, but we're at nine fifteen and some council members would like a rest break, so we'll take, uh, ten minutes.
Thank you.
Our online council members are ready to get back to what they're enjoying, so.
Well, that would be a city council meeting.
And we also have applicants in the audience waiting, so. Let's get to item number C. Nine C, the Haven at Paradise final plot and our senior planner CJ.
Oh CJ. Council, I just want to make an announcement about this item. I am the council liaison to the Park and Rec Advisory Board. And at our last meeting last week, the gentleman, Mr. Jonathan James was there to present to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board about this project. And since I knew this was coming on the agenda to the council and that it would be quasi judicial, I did step out of the room and I'm sure he'll confirm that. I stepped out of the room and went off where I could not hear the conversation. So that I could sit on this issue, so I just wanted to let the council know that.
Very good. Take it away.
All right, thank you, Council. Again, I'm CJ Gates, City of Woodland Park Planning Department. The item before you today is from Ventus LLC, the applicant and landowner. This is for a final plat of 25 lots of 35.78 acre tract of land. The proposed site is generally generally located north of King's Crown Road and east of Highway 24. On the right hand side of this slide, you will see the overall outline of the top of Paradise Master Plan, which the proposed final plat is included. Other subdivisions located within the amended top of Paradise Master Plan area that have received final plat approvals include filings within Paradise of Colorado, the Highlands in Paradise and Thunderbird subdivisions. The subject property is circled in red on the slide and is own suburban residential. As you can see on the right hand side of the slide is an aerial photo of the subject subdivision. In general, a major subdivision, this plating involves the construction of new streets, sidewalks, curbs, gutters, and stormwater retention. Extension of municipal facilities and dry utilities. Authorization of a major subdivision is a two step public process with approval of a preliminary plat, which in this specific case was done in 2019, as well as two extensions done in 2021 and 2022, and a submission of a final plat application. And this is complete with a public hearing before the planning commission and city council. The applicant proposes to develop 25 lots for single family dwelling units. Residential use is subject to administrative approval of a zoning development permit for each dwelling unit. The ZDP process also provides for a compliance check of criteria such as height of structures, parking, landscaping, and other site improvements for utilities, grading, drainage, and erosion erosion control. The preliminary plat, as you see on this specific slide here, consists of 35.7 acres with 24 residential lots that was originally approved on April 9th of 2019. And as mentioned previously, two extensions were granted. The approved preliminary plat includes tract A for stormwater detention, which is on the bottom of your screen here. And tract B, which was for private open space owned and maintained by the homeowners association. This tract was originally intended for the use of the residents of Haven at Paradise and to include a trail system throughout the tract. I would also like to note that there's currently, there's no trail easements that exist on track B. The preliminary plat proposal was to construct trails throughout this tract. The preliminary plat approval also included a variance from municipal code section 17.40.140 to reduce the minimum right of way width from 50 feet to 40 feet, subject to 30 foot front setbacks, as well as the following conditions. Park fees shall be paid prior to recording the final plat with a stipulation that these park fees are to be used to develop Chimney Park or other recreational amenities in Paradise Estates or Thunderbird Subdivisions. A wildfire mitigation plan shall be submitted to the city and to Northeast Teller County Fire Protection District for review and implementation by the developer prior to the final plat approval and complete the waterline loop from Red Haven to Blue Haven cul-de-sac during the first phase. The current application is for the Haven at Paradise final plat. Similar to the preliminary plat, the proposed final plat is for 35.77 acres of land. However, the lot configuration is a bit different in that this plat is for 25 residential lots and one tract for stormwater detention. The track that was originally proposed as open space with Haven at Paradise, which is tract B, was intended for residential lot that is 528,437 square feet in size, which should be accessed off of King's Crown Road. This final plat does not include any dedication of open space or parkland. However, it still meets the city's open space requirements. The parkland dedication requirements for all filings within the top of Paradise Master Plan were satisfied through the previous dedication of Chimney Park and the first filing of the Thunderbird Estates was approved with the dedication of a tract next to Woodland Park High School, along with a number of tracks that provide trail corridors. For future filings within the top of Paradise Master Plan area, including this proposal, the applicant has agreed to pay park fees with a stipulation that the fees collected to be used to develop Chimney Rock or other public recreational amenities in Paradise Estates or Thunderbird subdivisions. I would also like to note that after the planning commission recommendation, which we will get to later in the presentation, the landowner submitted a letter to staff which included within staff, which was included within your staff report. The letter outlined that the applicant will revert lot 25, which is seen here on your screen, back to a privately owned open space tract to label tract B. After the most preliminary, the most recent preliminary plot extension, the applicant submitted a zoning development permit application to the city of Woodland Park for approval of grading and infrastructure plans. City staff administratively approved the ZDP on June 27th of 2022, and construction has commenced on this site. The approved construction documents were attached within your staff report. Drainage, water, and sanitary sewer, as well as access and traffic flow are consistent with the preliminary plat approval, which includes the right of way width reduction of Blue Haven Place and Red Haven Place, which are proposed as 40 foot wide public right of way. This reduction of the right of way width is acceptable since the utility company companies prefer to install their infrastructure outside of the right of way easements on private property. Staff reviews chapter 17.24.080 in the evaluation and analysis of final plat applications. Section 17.24.70 outlines that the final plat must conform with the preliminary plat and all required information must be on the plat exhibit. Both of these standards comply with this application. The next two standards outline each lot must have sufficient frontage and all easements must meet city codes. These two standards comply as well. Each lot will have no foreseeable difficulties and each lot must meet the proper land use intensity ratios. These standards comply within this application. Lastly, each subdivision for residential use shall pay a park fee in the amount established by the city council. This standard may comply with this application. All payment of park fee shall be paid by the applicant prior to recording the final plat. The 2023 neighborhood park fee is $1,175 per residential lot, which equals out to a total of $28,200. The application has met the proper noticing requirements and were sent to the city departments on the slide. The Parks and Recreation Review Board reviewed this application on March 8th of 2023. The applicant Jonathan James was also in attendance in this meeting with Crab. As previously stated, the applicant submitted a letter to staff stating that lot 25 within the final plat would revert back to tract B is, and that's what Crab supported. The planning commission held a public hearing on February 9th, 2023. After consideration of the staff report and comments made at the public hearing, the planning commission voted unanimously to recommend to the city council approval of the Haven at Paradise final plat, subject to the conditions found in the staff report and add a condition number five. Staff's recommendation is to move to approve the Haven at Paradise final plat, subject to the following conditions. Number one, the developer must enter into a subdivision development agreement, including financial guarantee for the cost estimate of the remaining infrastructure to be installed. The agreement shall be the city's standard subdivision development agreement with any amendments or additions as required by the city. Any special requirements unique to a particular subdivision due to terrain, etc., shall be defined within the agreement. In association with the administrative site plan review, the applicant must provide updated drawings that respond and comply with all comments set forth within the city staff red line application comment packet. Number two, park fees must be paid prior to recording of the final plat. Number three, a wildfire mitigation plan shall be submitted to the city and Northeast Teller County Fire Protection District for review and approval. Number four, add a plat note to the final plat documenting the requirement for a 30 foot front setback. Lastly, number five, revert lot 25 to the original label tract B, which with the original plat notes and comments approved on the preliminary plat. For your information, Council, this number five was the condition that the planning commission added during that hearing. This concludes my presentation. As we've previously noted, the applicants are here in attendance tonight. If you guys have any questions.
Thanks, Sue. Do you guys have any questions for CJ at this time? All right, well, let's go ahead and have the applicants come up and introduce themselves.
Counsel, I am Jonathan James, the developer.
Counsel, I'm Frankie Balenzuela, the developer and the construction leader.
Very good, Council. Do you have any questions for these gentlemen?
And just what you're thinking on the lot that you're reverting 25, I think it is? What you're what you're thinking on that? It was going to be public land space or park or whatever? What's just your logic behind it or why you had a change in thought in terms of development?
The original intent is I was going to have that to be my personal residence in full transparency. Given the concerns that were presented at the planning commission meeting of February 9th, I was unable to attend that meeting because I was attending a funeral of my uncle. But what was reported back to me at the time, there was concerns, especially from most of the community about potential trail access. So our current thought is to, you know, consider and weigh the master plan for the Parks and Rec and see how that develops. From attending that meeting, it appears that a trail system in plan is their number one priority in the community, or at least at the top of the list. And just see how that develops and we'll continue to work with city and staff on a long term game plan. We have also own the other acres off of Majestic, which is also part of Paradise Estates. We're going to be here a while, so we had time.
Yeah, I know the the federal land haven't been particularly cooperative with us for having trails going into their space, so.
No, and that's been actually part of the question concerning contacting the National Forest Service and we're told in no uncertain terms to allow access and then realized we were maybe getting ourselves a little bit of a pickle. So we figured we'd get the right people involved. We'll just slow play this and figure it out together.
I appreciate that.
Councilmember Neil or Nakai?
I'm good, thank you.
I'm very comfortable with the change in the lot 25, back to the original.
Okay. Councilmember Case, anything?
No, thank you.
Okay. And Suzanne, do we have anyone signed up for a public comment on this? Okay, well, gentlemen, thank you for your time and thank you for waiting until this time. And let's go ahead and get a motion for these guys.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Haven at Paradise final plat. A request by Frankie Balenzuela, Ventus, yes, LLC applicant and Jonathan James, property owner for a final plot of 24 lots and two tracks of a 35.78 acre track of land located in section 19, section 30, T12 S comma R60 west of the 6th PM City Woodland Park in the suburban residential zone.
Seven.
You can always say as written.
Just above my neighborhood.
Counsel, if I may, I'm just looking at Zoom here. It looks like Karen has a comment to me.
Oh, sure. So before you vote, Council, let's let Karen make a comment.
I just wanted to confirm whether or not your motion includes those five conditions, sir.
Oh, absolutely.
As presented.
Yes, those five conditions that were presented by our senior planner CJ Gates.
I'll second that addition to his motion.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Council, you may vote.
So Frank, while we're waiting for the thing to come up, are you going to like offer him pizza?
Skyline Drive widened to four lanes.
It'll just make the traffic worse.
And increase the speed limit to 65.
Thank you, Council. Motion's passed unanimously.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're off to item number 10. And we have item A was removed, B is approved, resolution 901. And Kip Wiley is the presenter, and this is a topic that comes in front of us every year.
Good evening, Council. I know, I'll make it fast. Okay, before you, it's resolution 901. I mean, I just want to start off. I mean, it was brought to my attention. I'm going to share my screen here and hopefully it'll come up. It says, okay, it brought my attention that the packets, spreadsheets didn't come through as they should have. So I provided counsel with the printouts in front of you and I'll talk, I'll do my best to talk to the screens. So every year we do the WARTAP management reconciliation. This document proves to be a good method to plan for capital expenses, debt servicing, revenues, and all that combined saying where we need to be with our cap fees and our commodity rates. So with that said, we've all seen the spreadsheets before. I'm going to start off with capital expenses. That's that's up on my screen now. You try to scroll. It was my mouse every time I moved the up arrow. Anyway, so this spreadsheet is showing you on the right is obviously the year moving with the columns to, or I'm sorry, on the left with moving the columns on the right, you can see how much we spend. Everything above the dotted line is actual, everything below is projection. Okay, so in 2022, you can see year end. Okay, so in twenty twenty-two, you can see year end, we anticipate we spent around one hundred ninety-nine thousand. The big changes to this spreadsheet were basically the reservoir. Increased a down payment of the reservoir of two million, and that is in twenty twenty-four. I still have a million dollar, an additional million dollar down payment in twenty twenty-three for the design. Costs are going up, reasoning for this. So the increased cost of the reservoir is the drag with here. Twenty twenty-seven, I have a big ticket item of the upgrade to the water treatment facility. It will be thirty years old. Counsel will recall in the last couple of budgets, we had started increasing spending on the SCADA system. And we have some other things that are coming forward with upgrades as far as the North Well Field, radium removal, as we talked about during the budget process, the Dove project, which you just approved at one point three million. That same booster station about a couple of years ago was only four hundred thousand minus a building. Costs are going up, bottom line. So I have increased some, some of the costs of these capital expenses on the spreadsheet. There's my right. Moving forward to the debt service spreadsheet, everything above the dotted line is actual, everything below is the projection again. Just want to point out for the last two years, we have been debt-free, saving money. So trying to save up for this reservoir during our best not to go into debt. Debt starting in twenty twenty-five would include the reservoir at six hundred and forty-one thousand dollar annual payment for the next twenty years and then possible expansion or conveyance of water through the home state pipeline and an additional volume, if you will, with Colorado Springs Utilities is also projected on here as well as the debt for the water plant upgrade. And the water plant upgrade, one hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars in an annual payment. So these two spreadsheets basically pile into the large spreadsheet, which basically spits out all the numbers. So I'll go to that one quick. Bottom line up front.
This one's my favorite. I took it. This is my favorite of his spreadsheets.
Colors in it, right?
I tried to symbolize kind of where to draw your attention to on the spreadsheet. Bottom line up front, we are requesting, when we, the Utilities Advisory Committee is requesting a fifteen percent increase in tap fees, water and sewer tap fees. The reasoning for this, I'm going to explain through this larger spreadsheet. So moving from left to right on this spreadsheet, you go from the year to taps sold, taps available, to what your average tap fee cost, revenues for taps, revenues for commodities, expenses for capital projects, expenses for operations and debt service. So first I'll point your attention to the orange highlighted numbers in column B on the left. The reason I highlight these is because these are the years where we anticipate increasing our water supply with drilling additional wells that we've already applied for what's called a conditional water rate. And when we increase our water capacity, we increase taps on the system. Okay, moving over to column C, it is not highlighted just above the dotted line, new taps. Last year, just above the dotted line, we sold forty-nine taps. That was twenty single family and twenty-nine multifamily. The year before that was fifty-two, the year before that was thirty-nine. Have we hit a high point? Maybe, maybe not. Obviously, with the proven of preliminary plat, there'll be more lots available or a final plat, there'll be more lots available to sell more taps. Do we have the water to sell for these taps? Yes. Current planning number for this year was nine hundred and ninety-nine taps with the water we had available. Okay. So continue on moving to the right, you can see column E, average tap fee, where I have highlighted in green, just above the dotted line, fourteen thousand dollars roughly for what was the average cost for a water tap. As you all know, we have a lot of fees for taps. We have tier one, two, and three taps, commercial tap fees, different values for all those. The average tap fee in twenty twenty-two was fourteen thousand dollars. That's just below what we call a tier two tap or an average tap. Average size house tap, I should say. Okay, so the first number that's highlighted in dark green, the sixteen one nine zero, that is the fifteen percent increase in the average tap fee for next year or the recommended increase. For the remaining four years below that, that is a ten percent increase in tap fees, or typically we try to budget nine percent. Okay, moving on to the right, you see what I have highlighted in yellow, five hundred and nine. That's how much each customer pays basically for their water for the year. Okay, revenue is a little lower than the year before. Again, these are unaudited numbers for twenty twenty-two. I anticipate that to go up a little bit, but not much. It's pretty accurate. Highlighted in light blue right below the yellow, that is an eight point zero one percent increase in water rates. Okay, so every year, April first, we adjust our water fees based on the Consumer Price Index unit, and it was eight point zero one percent. Also, moving on to the right with the other light blue is the capital fee dollar amount that's paid, that's also increased at zero, eight point zero one percent. Okay, below those two highlighted blue numbers, we have an additional increase for our customers moving forward to make sure that the fund balance stays whole. So in the light green, we have highlighted those because in twenty twenty-four, there's a five percent increase and just below that in twenty twenty-five, a three percent increase. And then every other year below that is a two and a half percent increase just for projections. Also, I need to mention below the dark green highlighted cells, that's a five percent increase in tap fees projected every year after that, ten percent increase. Moving on to the right, all the way to the right in column P, highlighted in purple, I show this number basically what our annual balance was, or what we increased our annual balance in twenty twenty-two. And then just to the right of that, eight point seven million, that's what the projected fund balance will be in the water fund. We'll say when I first started the water fund in twenty twenty-twelve was around three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So we've done very well with taking advantage of tap sales because they haven't been as plentiful in the past and keeping our expenses minimal. And we're needing to start to upgrade our system. I will, it was highlighted in red, the three hundred and ninety or three hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. The UAC worked very hard at trying to get this number more positive. It was actually a negative, around two hundred thousand dollars. So we don't want our fund balance to drop below that, obviously. I would like to keep it around a million. So that's when the UAC decided to start looking a little bit harder at the tap fees and make, I'll say more severe adjustments than what we have in the past. Okay, tap fees have increased at five percent a year for the last twenty years, with the exception of a couple of years here and there where there was zero percent increase. So it's, I think we've done fairly well, in my opinion, but moving forward, we will have to, the UAC will have to look at maybe bringing back to city council and ordinance at some point, maybe solidifying these, these cap fees and the costs that we have to impose on it. With that, we recommend, and the UAC recommends to council, a fifteen percent increase in water tap and sewer tap fees for twenty twenty-three, effective April first. Would turn to the UAC members, Councilman Zuluwaga and Councilwoman Nakai, if they wanted to add anything.
Catherine, do you want to say something?
You can go first, Robert.
Well, we, there was a first UAC meeting we've had in a year and we had a Vulcan mind meld between Kip and the UAC in terms of all of the volume of of knowledge calculations and planned projects expenditures that we've got in front of us. As you all are aware, the reservoir is one of those, but also so is the upgrades. And so it looks like we have a really strong cumulative balance right now, but as this is projected out, we were unanimously concerned when he went under the red line, where you see the red highlight there. And so we discussed what that would look like and he kind of clarified that, well, we're already at an eight point oh one percent. That's just the bottom line, keeping up a consumer price index. So we're just chasing inflation right now. But with the tap fees, if I recall correctly, that also includes an eight point one oh one percent, correct, the fifteen percent?
Yes.
Yeah, so really, when you look at that increase in tap fees, it's really closer to about a seven or eight percent increase in the, in the tap fee. And that, by changing that from, we were saying, well, okay, what if we leave it at ten percent? But then we have negative numbers over in our cumulative balance by the, by the year twenty twenty-eight. So this is, all of this is forward planning with all the expenditures, et cetera. So I think it's very conservative from how I heard Kip's presentation of it.
Catherine?
Yeah, I mean, Robert's pretty much summed it up. I mean, I wasn't not necessarily crazy about going that high on the percentage for the tap fees, but I just didn't see a way to do it any other way. Because having a negative balance is really just not the right answer. And we, we bounced around a couple of other ideas and, and at one point it was twenty percent. We dropped it back down to fifteen. So I think we spent two and a half hours going over this, so it wasn't something we just randomly decided to do. So I think it's a decent plan. And I think Kip does an amazing job with the money.
Counsel, anything else?
I just have one question for Kip, and it has to do with the new wells. You said we were going to be drilling some additional wells. Are, are we actually pulling water out of the existing wells that we currently have, or are those still backup?
I think what you're asking, so we, we use some of our wells for pumping and some of them for monitoring. All right, the new wells would be pulling from the same source, but they're in locations to where they won't, they shouldn't affect our current wells or the new well locations will maybe compete with each other because they are close, but those aren't drilled yet. Is that what you're asking?
Well, I, I know that we had, the first time you gave me a presentation, you had pointed out that we had some wells that had been drilled, but we were not pulling water out of them. They were kind of reserves. Have we started taking water out of those wells? And then I think you've answered the question, what happens to these new wells? Will they be just sitting there as a reserve or will we actually be trying to pull water out of those also?
Okay, so we have not started pulling from the wells that we've drilled that aren't connected to our system yet. Those will be connected in the proposed years with the additional of other wells we will drill.
Okay, so they are still kind of our reserve last ditch water sources right now?
I wouldn't say they're reserved last ditch. It's, it's kind of continuing forward with the plan for the total water development because as, as the city grows, we will pull those sources online and we account for that water.
Okay, okay. I'll buy that explanation. Okay, thank you. Yeah, my terminology was probably wrong. You had factored that into your plan. I was thinking it as kind of a backup source of water if we needed to tap into them prematurely.
Well, Rusty, if you want a more in-depth understanding of that, I think it would probably require a cup of coffee because each of these wells depends on the distance it is from the surface and then there's replacing water and Kip will give you a, a long explanation that's way more complicated than this in terms of what the rationale behind that and the planning behind that.
Trust me, it was a long explanation the first time, which is why I have avoided going back for a second update. And it would take a pot of coffee, not a cup.
Keep this and drink coffee.
We just assume it's very fluid going forward?
It has been a stagnant night, by the way.
I will say it was very informative and I learned more about water than I ever thought I would.
My plan's working.
The Utilities Board is a highly educational board.
Yeah, it was, it was nice. It was a good meeting, though.
And it meets the least.
Yes, but we're going to, we're going to try to fix that, not meet the least.
Mayor, may I make a motion?
Absolutely.
To approve resolution nine oh one series twenty twenty-three as presented by Mr. Webber.
I'll second.
Counsel, you may vote. Thank you, counsel. Motion is passed unanimously.
Thank you.
And counsel, while we have Kip up there talking about water, I thought he would be well served to give a brief reservoir update, and since we're making water pumps.
Gladly. So last week, the city met with the Boy Scouts with their councils. Very positive meeting that came out of that, all parties in favor. So I'm pleased to report that our, our city attorney is in contact with their Boy Scouts attorney. And they're working on, I'll say, the legalities to move this thing forward. So very, very good things that came out of that. So Dylan is, Dylan's an Eagle Scout and he's helping with us working on this project and it's going very well. Had some good news even after the meeting with their attorneys. So we're hoping we can bring something to you as far as the timeline. I would say there were two dates that were given to us when the Boy Scouts meet, when they would make a decision on how they would like to proceed as well from their legal advice from their attorney. And the two dates are May or September. Cool.
Now, Kip, if you work this properly, there's at least a hundred Eagle projects to get that reservoir. You could have every scout in Woodland Park become an Eagle Scout just by getting that reservoir dug by the scouts.
Very nice.
All right. Thanks a lot, Kip.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to reports. I just have a couple of dates. I've got Parks and Recreation has dropped in basketball on Wednesday from seven to nine at the Woodland Park Middle School. Cost is five dollars per person. It is cash only. And the program we're on now until April twenty-sixth. Then we also have Parks and Recreation Spring Coloring Page Contest. Get creative and color the Parks and Recreation Spring Coloring Page. Grab one from the back counter, all you avid colors in the audience. Or you can, or you can print off the city website, decorate it and return it to Parks and Recreation by April tenth for a chance to win a goodie bag. And adults can participate too. Babysitter Boot Camp at the Woodland Park Aquatic Center is March twenty-ninth from eleven AM until six PM at the Aquatic Center and you can register by March twenty-seventh. Spring Break Open Swim is from eleven AM to six PM, March twenty-fifth through April second. The Woodland Park Chamber Spring Business Expo is Thursday, April sixth, from five PM to seven PM at the Past Cultural Center. And we did get a handout from the Community Partnership and they have a lot of upcoming events. All of the events and workshops are free and I'm sure that you can go to the Community Partnership website or give them a call. Their website is www.cpteller.org. And they've got a lot of good stuff going on for the community. Councilmember Case.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let you guys know that Parks and Recreation is doing great things. They are having an open house for the Parks and Recreation, Parks Trails and Open Space Master Plan Project for into the project prioritization process. The community open house is March. The community open house is March twenty-second, next week, at the U-Pass Cultural Center. Is it next week? Yes, uh, from five thirty to seven PM, so hopefully you guys, some folks can attend and see what. Um, the priorities are at this point, and as was mentioned, most of it, the most of the top four have. Trails in the language. Let's see, the programs, uh, total of Punch Cars, Body Sculpt, Family Dog Training, blah, blah, blah. All their programs are up fifteen percent from twenty twenty-two. And the Whack passes, all the different types are up twenty percent from twenty twenty-two. And their recovery in February was fifty-nine percent. And January and February recovery rate is sixty-seven percent, that's unheard of. So again, uh, kudos to the management at the Cindy and the management at the, uh. Aquatic Center and all the programs, so anyway, that's all I have, thank you. Oh, I don't know if that's appropriate. Business after hours.
So the chamber is having its monthly business after hours on Tuesday, March twenty-first from five thirty to seven at Keller Williams.
It's at the Woodland Exchange Building. It is hosted by Keller Williams Client's Choice. Hillary and I both, um, work out of that office. Um, and we have Thrive Primary Care and Skyridge Lending involved. So that means the entire building will be open and available for bu- business after hours, catered by McGenties. Um, and come one, come all, it'll be a lot of fun. Hopefully the weather will be nice. Um, and it will support our nonprofit that we will be featuring is the U-Pass Symphony Guild. And we have our new, um, artwork for this year's concert that will be. You'll be able to see what that looks like, it's pretty cool. So that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Connors.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to, uh, thank our first responders and, um, the volunteers for this last St. Patrick's Day parade we had. It was very safe, organized, and I appreciate all the volunteers and everybody who participated. Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Nakai.
Uh, obviously, the UAC met and, uh, thank you all very much for agreeing with us. Um, and that's pretty much all I have.
Councilmember Neil.
Uh, I'm gonna apologize to everybody, maybe this is where we had the rules and procedures, uh, discussion on a thirty-minute limit.
Oh, God, you can't go on for thirty minutes now.
I know, uh, we did have a DDA meeting and it was a two-hour meeting, so I do have quite a few, uh, topics to, to share with, uh, the council. And the, the public, uh, it was held on March seventh, uh, running through it as fast as I can, though. That, that item ten A that was on the original, uh, new business was dropped off because we, uh, we're not able to get. All the documents finalized after, uh, extensive discussions with the attorney following the executive session. It was, uh, uh, realized that we actually need five documents. Uh, the first is the contract to buy and sell real estate for the commercial, um, that's the purchase contract, we have that, um, all parties have agreed. Uh, uh, the DDA and the, uh, Tava House has agreed. Um, the addendum to purchase the contract, we have that, that is the document that has all the callbacks and the protections to the city. Um, should, uh, the developer fail in any one of the, uh, phases to perform. Um, where not only did we keep the eight hundred thousand, we get an, an additional hundred thousand. And any undeveloped land would revert back, so that's in the second document and we have it. The third is a performance deed of trust, which, uh, again specifies what the performance, um, requirements are. We have that document. The two that held everything up from today's meeting is, it, it was, um, determined. That the plan of development that we currently have on file for Woodland Station is from two thousand and nine. And the DDA attorney felt, um, and this is with input from the city. That we should update that to show the four phases plus the timeline. So we are updating and amending the plan of development for Woodland Station. Um, that one is still in development, and the last one is the, yeah, an amended and restated disposition and development agreement. Currently, the disposition and development agreement exists between the DDA and the city. Um, it was felt that this should be converted and restated to a three-party agreement. So that the DDA, um, and the Tava House, which have already agreed to it, uh, the terms and conditions. The one that we need, the third party, which is the city, that is being prepared. And those two documents should be, uh, delivered and ready to go before the Planning Commission. Uh, next Thursday. If we are successful with that, we hope to come back for, um, well, the DDA attorney believes that a resolution. Is all that is required, and if that is true and we get through the Planning Commission next Thursday. We will have the Tava House, Woodland Station Purchase Agreement with all documents ready for the City Council on April sixth. If, um, the city attorney co- kicks back and said, says that they feel that an ordinance is required over a resolution. April sixth would simply be the first reading with, uh, April twentieth, um, final vote. Um, at which time the developer can then start developing Woodland Station if it's approved. That's the first topic. Second topic is the Taylor Enterprise that, um, the, the board is trying to do. Everything proper and we're reviewing, um, uh, pretty much it was an appeal by, um, Dan Taylor. About what the TIF amount should be, um, whether it included personal a- as well as the real property. The board had, took the time to look at all emails, we, we did speak to some past DDA members. Who gave, uh, oral testimony that their understanding was it, the TIF agreement for Taylor Enterprise. Should include real and personal. The book, the board voted to accept that it included both, so they did some relooking and saw that. From twenty twenty-two, they, there should be an additional one thousand four hundred seventy-nine dollars and twenty-two cents, but in. Figuring that, they did go back and look at twenty twenty-one and saw that there was, uh, the personal property left out. So the total amount that was approved, once we added the personal, was three thousand nine hundred thirty-seven dollars and seventy-one cents. Was the final check approved to, uh, make, uh, Taylor Enterprises whole. The third topic of importance was AJ's TIF reimbursement paperwork, um, that, um, that's for AJ's Pizza. Uh, it has been received, uh, by the DDA attorney, um, the DDA board didn't have any comments. AJ has approved it, um, the attorney is drafting a parallel resolution. Because we, we have gone to the extent of everything we do, we are gonna pass a resolution along with it. To codify all of our votes, which, uh, we felt is the proper way. So we are drafting the resolution and the final TIF reimbursement has been drafted. And it will be coming back, uh, to the April DDA meeting for a, approval at that time. The last thing, uh, to cover is, came from the Chair's Report, and this was kind of a, a nice thing. Where the city finance director, Mr. Vasseletti, had found a discrepancy or disparity between what the county assessor and the county treasurer were saying. And simultaneous, a, a citizen, uh, uh, Mr. Tanner Coy had discovered the same error. Uh, the two of them got together, their comparison, um, jived, so they took it to the county. Um, uh, treasurer, uh, Mr. Salusta, who, uh, acknowledged and took responsibility. It was in fact an error, he confirmed it, and the, the net result after all of the fees and everything are recalculated. Is that the DDA was, um, entitled to an additional seventy-five thousand eight hundred and sixty-three dollars and seven cents. So this was a, a great, um, uh, display of where we had a citizen, Mr. Coy. And the city staff, um, Mr. Vasseletti, um, looking over the DDA shoulder and actually discovered something. Um, that they challenged, and it turned out to be a valid challenge and the DDA be- benefited from it. And that concludes the Chair Report, um, there were some discussions, um, about documents. That the Chair is writing up a, a full report for the April meeting, and hopefully I'll have that to present. At the next report I give on DDA meetings. That concludes my briefing, hopefully it was well under ten minutes. Wake up.
Councilmember Zulawaga.
No, I just, uh, thank you for keeping it brief, Rusty, because Suzanne had a guess, we'd be out of here by ten, so we're only twenty minutes behind. I have nothing to report.
City Attorney. And City Manager.
I have a report from Aaron for sales tax, but we can delay that until March six, or April sixth, if you want.
I'm fine with delaying it.
Thanks for keeping the chair warm, bro.
Oh, we do.
Sorry, buddy. Just, uh, we're, uh, real quick snowplow naming contest results, we have three, they're fun, they are.
Uh, we announced the winners on Monday, the two from the adults category are Scoop Dog and Betty Whiteout. The winner from the children's category is Blizzard of Oz. And during the contest, we quickly learned the popularity of the name Plowey McPlowface. We received almost twenty total votes of Plowey McPlowface. Uh, so to honor the popularity of that, we decided to add a fourth plow, so one of the little sidewalk plows will be Plowey McPlowface.
Thank you, Kristen, and thanks to the, uh, short, very shorthanded, uh, crews today who are plowing snow, we really appreciate their hard work. Um, and then the, the last thing I have for you all, uh, received an email this evening, uh, Mayor Labar and I. The council member David Ott has resigned his post from the city council effective immediately. Um, so you will not see him here tonight, nor in the future, he and his family are moving to Texas. So that does not allow him to remain on council, he, uh, appreciates the time he had here. We thank him for, uh, his time and dedication to the role. So.
Okay, and that means that, uh, we can either take applications or put out an election. And council will have to have that kind of discussion to determine what we have consensus to do, so.
Mayor, I know it's late, um, but I, I have it prepared to give you what your choices are, uh, in the charter, so. There's, um, three or more, let's see here. To fill a vacancy, the mayor or remaining council may appoint any qualified person, so you can appoint someone. Conduct an open application process. Or appoint the person who received the next highest votes total in the last municipal election. Should the vacancy occur within six months of said election, so that would, that would not pertain.
Right.
So either application or appoint.
Okay. And that's probably, uh, an agenda topic for next time, we can just have a brief discussion.
Don't we have enough, don't we have the option to do nothing?
I didn't hear it. What? Yeah, and you can do nothing. I know, I just.
Yeah, yeah, which is where, which really sucks, but I just, that's the other option, right?
Yeah, Kelly and I can tell you all about that. Yeah, oh, and, and Councilwoman Zulawaga, he experienced it constantly too for a while, so.
I was here too.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That's right, you were, so probably appointing, but.
Yes.
We'll figure it out. Agenda, have the conversation and carry on from there. So. All right, everyone, this meeting is finally adjourned.
Thanks.